I will call the December 17th meeting of the Noblesville Common Council to order at 7 o'clock. If you get all rise, as I lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Lee, could you call the roll?
Mr. Boyce?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Elliott?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Thurston?
Present.
Ms. Wilds?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Mr. President, you have a call.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I would move that we amend the agenda to add approval of excerpts of minutes from the November 26, 2024, after the approval of the agenda.
Second. There's a motion to amend the agenda, or there's a motion to amend the agenda in a second. There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion to approve the agenda as amended in a second. There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the excerpts of the minutes from the November 26th meeting.
Second.
Motion to approve the excerpts of the November 26th meeting in a second. There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the minutes from the December 3rd work session.
Second. Motion to approve the minutes from our December 3rd work session in a second. There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move...
One abstention.
And one, eight, I'm sorry. Eight zero one. One abstention. Mr. Boyce.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the minutes from the December 3rd meeting.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes from our December 3rd meeting in a second. There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Now it's nine oh. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I have several in front of me, and I will assume they're all about the last two items on the agenda. If they're not, please come forward now. Otherwise, I will just hold up until then. Okay, thank you. Mayor's comments. Mr. Mayor will hold his comments until that time. Council committee reports. Economic development.
Yes, Mr. President. The Economic Development Committee met on December 4th. However, we do not have minutes from that meeting, so we received a report from staff and some updates, but I'm happy to give a more detailed report once I have those minutes at our next meeting.
Thank you. Any questions? Finance committee. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met December 12th. Dave Johnson, Aaron Smith, and myself. Tom McDonald gave us an update, a summary of routine appropriation transfers per RC-1-24, Section 1, Quarter 4, 2024. And Caitlin Kesner gave us an update on the summary of appropriation of grant proceeds per RC-2-24, Fourth Quarter. And Caitlin also talked us about a debt authorization for a 2025 citywide capital equipment lease purchase financing program. That and the claims docket come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Any questions for Mr. Davis?
Mr. President, I would move that we present, or that we approve the claims as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the claims in a second. There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine to zero. New ordinances for discussion? Yes, Mr. Davis.
Do you like the roads committee?
I would. It's not on my cheat sheet here.
Absolutely. The roads committee did meet on the 6th of December. Mr. Peterson was present, and Mr. Thurston was present. Other than, I will say, Mr. Thurston did take a note from Mr. Brian Ayer, the late councilman, the past councilman, who was a couple minutes late. So, other than that, then the three of us were present. We first heard a report by Keep Noblesville Beautiful, an update and presentation, and they're really doing an excellent job of keeping our roundabouts looking nice. And also, they're the ones that were in charge of painting all of the wastewater tubs along Pleasant Street. I think those look very, very nice, so I'm highly excited about that. State Road 37 and 186th Street, the reduced conflict intersection, is open, and we've only gotten positive feedback. That was a very dangerous intersection for any of you, especially anybody that was trying to go straight to the east or to the west. And so, very nice to have that done. State Road 37 and 191st Street, pedestrian crossing and added lanes are also open. A few things to keep in mind for all of you. Pleasant Street, Phase 2, early in January, we're going to have to close from 13th Street to 16th Street, and that will be closed almost to the end of the year. So, that's going to be a little bit of a nag, but it will be very nice when it's open. For Phase 3, then, right now, the bridge construction is on, or maybe even a little bit ahead of schedule. Ally probably doesn't want me to say that, but as of right now, it is 90-day closure, though expected next year for State Road 32 at Hague, and that's going to be for 90 days. So, we do have that one coming up also. Little Chicago Road over Morris, the last that I've heard, it's still going to be open by year end. Thanks a lot to Jim Hellman for pushing through the utilities on that. And then, we are moving forward on the Bowden Road. There's no changing in timing for any of those roundabouts, but everything is still moving forward on that.
Thank you.
Those are the high-hard ones. If anyone has any questions, let me know.
Anybody that would like to get involved with Keep Noblesville Beautiful, it is keepnoblesvillebeautiful.org. Very creative. So, we need a lot of help and a lot of help with volunteers. Any other questions for Mr. Boyce? Now, moving on. Counsel to, let's see, counsel to consider ordinance 75-12-24 and ordinance annexing approximately 42.5 acres in Noblesville Township. Resolution RC 5424, adopting a fiscal plan for property east of State Road 37, west of Presley Drive Extended, and approximately 1,315 feet south of east 186th Street, and establishing a public hearing.
Move to introduce ordinance number 75-12-24.
Joyce Sanyel.
Good evening. This is an introduction to a proposed ordinance for annexation. It is a supervoluntary annexation. It has been submitted by the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. Again, it is for approximately 43 acres. Currently existing on this site, on basically the western portion of this, there is a cell tower and solar fields. On the solid red portion here, to be constructed, is the new Hamilton County Public Safety Center. Again, this is a request this evening for you to set a public hearing. We would like that hearing for your January 14th, 2025, meeting. After we have the public hearing, we will then discuss, further discuss, the resolution regarding the fiscal analysis, and then we will return on the, on January 28th, 2025, for a final vote on the annexation ordinance. With that, I will ask if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we establish a public hearing for ordinance number 75-12-24 at the January 14th, 2025, meeting.
Second.
Motion to establish a public hearing for ordinance 75-12-24 at the January 14th, 2025, meeting in a second. There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine to zero.
Thank you.
Counsel to consider Resolution RC 5624, a resolution authorizing the City of Noblesville to enter into a 2025 capital equipment lease purchase financing agreement. Caitlin Kesner.
Good evening. Caitlin Kesner, Deputy Controller. Before you, it's a resolution similar to what we have brought in previous years, which authorizes entry into the 2025 capital equipment lease purchase financing agreement. The amount of the lease is approximately $5,030,000 with a term of five years. The interest rate will be locked in tomorrow as long as you guys pass the resolution, but it was projected to be 4.128% when the lease was bid on. The lessor is JP Morgan Chase Bank, who we used the previous two years. And the listing of equipment to be financed is included in Exhibit A. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President, I want to clarify. This is money, this is, we are already planning to spend this money in the 2025 budget, so this is just one of the steps to make sure that that moves forward, correct?
Correct. It was budgeted for. We just are required to have a resolution to enter into the DIT agreement.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, then I would move that we approve Resolution RC 56-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve Resolution RC 5624 in a second. There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine to zero. The next two ordinances are listed as third quarter. They are actually fourth quarter, so I will read them correctly. Counsel to receive summary of appropriation of fourth quarter grant proceeds pursuant to Resolution RC 224. Caitlin Kesner.
And thank you for catching that and correcting that. RC 224 allows the Controller's Office to appropriate grant proceeds under specific circumstances, where the grant tells us exactly what the money must be spent for, and requires that the appropriations be reported to council on a quarterly basis. Before you is the list of appropriations from Quarter 4, 2024, as well as the list of grant proceeds that we received. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? And this is going to be directly appropriated because normally income goes straight into the general fund, but because of the nature of the grants, these have to be appropriated.
Yes, revenue in, such as these, would usually go to the general fund.
Any other questions? Oh, there's no action. Okay, no action. Counsel to receive summary of fiscally neutral fourth quarter appropriation transfers pursuant to Resolution RC 124. Tom McDonald.
Good evening. I'm Tom McDonald, Deputy Financial Officer. And this item fulfills a requirement in RC-1-24 that our office provide to you a summary of the appropriation transfers that the City Controller is authorized to make each quarter. Under this authorization, these transfers must be technical in nature and be no more than $50,000 per transfer, or $125,000 in total. The transfers in our report satisfy that requirement. I won't go through each one. There are five of them, but I'd have to answer any questions.
This is an ordinance we passed, what, four or five years ago? I mean, we pressed a resolution, but this was put in place several years ago. Are there any questions? No action on this item either. Counsel to consider Resolution RC 5724, a resolution recognizing certain employees of the City of Noblesville. Aaron Smith.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Every, every year, we recognize our employees that have hit milestones in the City of Noblesville. You know, attached to this ordinance, there's over 20 employees that have hit 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and 35 years total. So, I wanted to make sure that those names were, they were recognized for their accomplishment, what they do for the city, and that we make a motion to enter their names into the records, that they are memorialized in our minutes going forward.
Any questions? Comments?
Mr. President, I'd just make a comment. They did kind of a formal thing here at City Hall. Each department had got up and spoke, said a couple nice words about, especially the folks that have been here over, I think, 15 years. You know, Mr. Johnson was here as well. It was nice to hear everybody. A lot of good accomplishments from those folks in those years.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve Resolution RC 57-24 and enter the names of the employees into the minutes.
Second.
Motion to approve Resolution RC 5724 and enter the employees' names into the minutes. And a second, there's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine to zero. Counsel to consider 2025 appointments. Evelyn Lee's.
Good evening. At your December 3rd meeting, you were notified of the appointments that would be expiring at the end of the year and a couple new ones that will be starting at the beginning of this next year. You, before you, you have a list of the current appointees and the proposed appointees, and they are here for your consideration. And vote tonight.
In front of us and excited to serve. Any questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the 2025 appointments as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the 2025 council appointments as presented in a second. There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. Previously discussed ordinances. Counsel to consider ordinance 691124, an ordinance approving an additional appropriation in the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund to provide funding for the Downtown Streetscape Project. Tom McDonald.
Again, Tom McDonald, Deputy Financial Officer. And this ordinance deals with the need to reprioritize the use of American Rescue Plan Fiscal Recovery Funds from the Logan Street Trail Project to the Downtown Streetscape Project to ensure that those funds can be obligated by the federal deadline, and this also includes a small appropriation increase. Happy to provide more information if you'd like.
Any questions? If there are no questions, I will move to open the public hearing for ordinance 691124.
Second.
Mr. President, seeing no one come forward, I would move that we close the public hearing for ordinance number 69-11-24.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 691124 in a second. There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 6911-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 691124 in a second. This is a roll-call vote.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Counsel to consider ordinance 701124, an ordinance approving an additional appropriation in the 2016 Loet for Roads Fund to provide funding for investment fees. Tom McDonald.
Thank you. This ordinance would provide an additional appropriation of $4,700, which is necessary to cover the cost of investment fees associated with the 2016 Loet for Roads Fund.
Any questions? If not, I will open up the public hearing for ordinance 701124.
Second.
Mr. President, seeing no one come forward, I would move that we close the public hearing for ordinance number 70-11-24.
Second.
The motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 701124 in a second. There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 70-11-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 701124 in a second. This is a roll-call vote.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. And although I appreciate it, I don't need a second to open the public hearing. Just... Counsel to consider ordinance 701124, an ordinance approving an additional appropriation in the Parks Program Fund to support golf program operations. Tom McDonald.
Thank you. This ordinance would increase the spending authority for the golf program, which is necessary due to the duration of this year's golf season and the demand for golf being better than expected. This increase is paid for with the same revenue generated by the program.
Any questions?
If I may add, Mr. President, just a public note of thanks to Mr. McDonald and Ms. Kesner for all the work they do and the deep dive we take at, in the Finance Committee to go into the issues that we're voting on tonight. We get a preview of those in very, very good detail, and I just want to publicly thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. In front of a big crowd, too. Thank you. I will open up the public hearing for ordinance 711124.
Mr. President, seeing no one come forward, I would move that we close the public hearing for ordinance number 71-11-24.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 711124 in a second. There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 71-11-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 711124 in a second. This is a roll-call vote. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Counsel to consider Ordinance 7412-24 an ordinance amending the rules of procedure of the Common Council of the City of Noblesville, Indiana. Jonathan Hughes.
Mr. President, members of the council, good to see you this evening. Jonathan Hughes, City Attorney. Was here before you at your last meeting on December 3 to present this ordinance. There have been no changes to the ordinance since then. This ordinance allows you to start your meetings next month, or next, it'll be next month, but for all of next year at 6:00 PM. Currently, our start times have been 7:00. Earlier this year, you expressed a preference for 6:00, and so this ordinance authorizes that change, starting in 2025. It also allows you the flexibility in future years to select your start time when we advertise our meetings. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, that's the purpose of tonight's ordinance.
This will coincide with my bedtime better. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve Ordinance Number 74-12-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion approve Ordinance 7412-24 in a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. I will read the next two items together, and then we will vote on the next two items together. After much discussion. Counsel to consider Ordinance 7211-24 an ordinance for a change of zoning from R1 Single Family Residential, PB Planned Business, and I1 Light Industrial to R3 Single Family Residential, R5 Multi-Family Residential, and PB Planned Business for approximately 173 acres east and west of Hag Road and north and south of East 206 Street. And counsel to consider Ordinance 7311-24 an ordinance for a change of zoning from R3 Single Family Residential, R5 Multi-Family Residential, and PB Planned Business to Single Family Residential, Multi-Family Residential Plan Business Plan Development, R3, R5, PB PD, including the adoption of a preliminary development plan and plan development ordinance, including waivers and conditions to be known as Morse Village Plan Development for approximately 173 acres east and west of Hag Road and north and south of East 206 Street, as amended. Mayor Jensen.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you for allowing me just a few moments to speak tonight. I would like to be brief. But before I start, I want to thank everyone who is here tonight, everyone who is tuning in online. Over the last several weeks since our last meeting, I know I reflect your responses well, that we have met with many people here at City Hall. We've met in homes across our community. We've answered phone calls and emails, and I appreciate the constituents who have stepped forward in a civil and constructive way to offer feedback on this project. I also want to thank our staff. Our staff has worked tirelessly. Projects like this are not easy to work through, and they have oftentimes been on the other end of different comments made towards them, and I just want to thank them on behalf of our administration, on behalf of the council, for the work that they have put into that. As many of you know, yesterday, the Noblesville Police Department was made aware of multiple threats of violence towards elected officials and members of the staff here at the City of Noblesville. I just want to simply say and reiterate that there is no place in the public discord for threats of violence. Every day, this process, our life, is set up to be constructive. It's set up to allow for criticism, to allow for conversation, so long it is civil and productive. Our city deserves better when it comes to public discourse and conversation. The next generation who is watching us every single day deserves better, and I am hopeful that tonight and going forward, that we can have civil disagreements, civil conversations, meaningful conversations about projects both here tonight and moving forward. On the issue of the Morse Village Project, there were two issues two weeks ago that came up that I felt like we wanted to do more of a deep dive on, and that was the concern around home valuation and saleability of townhomes and condos in West Point. With that in mind, I thought it was important to ask an independent observer to take a look at data specifically around that housing project and product. I reached out to the Indiana Association of Realtors, as well as the Metropolitan Indianapolis Board of Realtors, MYBORE, and asked them to conduct an independent review of saleability both of townhomes and condos. They had done that, and Lacey Everett is here tonight and will ask her to speak shortly after the developer presents. She's here simply to speak specifically to the memo that was provided to you and that is also on the table just outside the council chambers here tonight. Another issue that was raised that is of very importance, not just to the City of Noblesville, but to the entire state, is water usage. This is something that the entire state has been focused on for the last several years, and I appreciate individuals bringing it forward. We've reached out to Citizens Energy Group, who own not only Morse Reservoir, but it serves the majority of the City of Noblesville for water usage. They provided a memo that you have seen, and that is also, again, on the table and has been shared with those who specifically brought up water usage, outlining their long-term plans and their capacity and their ability not only to handle this project, but to handle projects into the future. I think it's important to note that these utilities, Citizens Water and Energy Companies, sit on our various boards and see and approve the projects that we see going in front of us. They are an active participant into our process as we continue to grow. Both those documents, as I stated, is available for the public just outside the door. It's also available online as part of the agenda tonight, and you all council members have received that as well. The final note I'd like to make involves something that I didn't plan to discuss tonight, but it's involving the mail piece that was sent to many of our residents this weekend. Well, I didn't want to comment. After doing some research, I needed to point out a few things. If you received the mail piece this weekend, the source of the information is an organization called ParkServe. Unfortunately, Park Serve, as part of their organization, claims currently that Noblesville has four parks within the City of Noblesville. In fact, we actually have 10 parks within walking distance of the City of Residents. Forest Park, Seminary Park, South Side Park, Federal Hill Commons, Hag Road Nature Haven, Dillon Park, Finch Creek Park, Potter's Bridge Park, Morse Park and Beach, and the Bray Family Homestead Park. That doesn't include the Noblesville United Soccer Sports Fields, multipurpose fields, that is owned by Noblesville Parks and Recreation. The city also owns two public golf courses, as well as over 100 miles of trail network. I think that is a point that needs to be made tonight. Additionally, Park Serve claims, as part of their research on the mailer, that the City of Noblesville has 73 acres of park space. In fact, Noblesville has more than 73 acres in Forest Park alone. Also has more than 73 acres in Dillon Park alone. Has more than 73 acres in Finch Creek Park alone. They claim we have 73 acres. In fact, ladies and gentlemen, we have 821.48 acres of parkland. And in fact, you all, because of your agreement with Hyde Park, will be bringing on in the near future 162 more acres out as part of Hyde Park. This equates to 11.04 acres of park space per 1,000 residents. I simply believe that it is important, when we discuss issues like this, that we discuss it in factual basis, and I wanted to clear that up tonight. With that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Adam Hill and Phil Sunneling of LoR Corporation to discuss some different adjustments they've made. I want to thank the members of the public who have met not only with LoR, but with city council members. Councilor Davis and others have helped convene groups, especially those on Edgewater Drive, to discuss the different impacts to homes along there, and I know LoR is going to speak to that tonight. And then again, we'll invite Lacey up to talk from MYBORE after that. But appreciate your consideration of this tonight, and thanks for allowing me to introduce it.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. President. May please the council. Thank you, council members. My name's Adam Hill with LoR Corporation, Phil Sunneling with LoR Corporation. We have the same team that's been with us for the last few meetings, here to answer any questions you have. As Mayor alluded to, we presented on this project to the plan commission and to the council, and the most recent presentation was about two weeks ago. And since that time, we've had numerous conversations, numerous conversations with some of you all. We'd have conversations with numerous neighbors about the overall project. And we've tried to go back and refine the project even further from where we started. So we don't really want to walk through the main project itself, North Point, South Point, because most of the questions and the concern focus mostly on West Point. So we thought it was probably a good idea to walk through, kind of, what is the original plan? Where did we start when we first started out on the Morse Village project? And we want to walk through some of the original plan and where we started. We had 165 total units. Now, understand this is just on West Point. 165 total units. Four-story townhomes. Five-story condos along the south. We had proposed 46 boat docks in Party Cove. We had standard buffers throughout. We didn't have any rental limitations throughout the project, nor did we have parking commitments. We had no wetland preservation commitments. We had no tree preservation commitments, and we had no buffering commitments. That's where we started. This is an iterative process. Our goal is to put together a project that will be successful, a project that people can feel good about, a high quality that was driven into us from the get-go. We want high quality, high character throughout the entire Morse Village project. So we went back to the drawing board. We went back and Phil and I spent nights, weekends, working through the entire process to refine the plan, and it didn't just happen once. We refined this plan probably 10 to 15 times. Numerous iterations. Can this work? I don't know. We'll analyze it. Can this work? We'll analyze it. We went through this entire process, and we've achieved something that is much different from where we started. And Phil's going to walk us through a lot of the key points and where we are with the current plan.
Thank you, Adam. For the record, my name is Phil Sunneling, and I'm with the LoR Corporation. As Adam alluded to, fast forward to where we are today. I'll start with density. Our latest layout consists of a total of 135 units, which represent an 18% reduction from where we started. At the request of the neighbors to our north, we've committed to two-story townhomes along the northern property line. We've also committed to them an enhanced buffer, which includes a berm along with the double the number of required trees, including additional conifers incorporated. We've also made significant commitments to our neighbors to the west. And before I get into these details, I just want to first thank the folks of Edgewater, particularly Russ French. After our meeting two weeks ago, Russ approached Adam and I in a very professional and very respectful manner and asked if we would be willing to meet with a few representatives from his community. We welcomed the dialogue, of course, and we sat down with Russ and about 10 of his neighbors for a few hours in his living room. We talked through a number of issues and concerns. And throughout the past two weeks, as Adam mentioned, we've continued to have robust dialogue with that group. They were very clear, though they do not necessarily support West Point and would prefer the property to remain as is. If it were to be approved, they wanted us to consider three reasonable requests, which I'm happy to report. We've incorporated these as commitments into our ordinance. First, buffering along Edgewater Drive. They asked what we would be able to do to better buffer from the closest townhomes to their homes. We thought outside the box and frankly outside of our property and determined that planting trees within the right-of-way along Edgewater Drive would be the most effective way to buffer. We discussed this with city staff and received their blessing, and we have incorporated this as a formal commitment into our PED ordinance. Next, their second concern was with respect to the heights of these townhomes along Edgewater. Through extensive discussions, we agreed to reduce these four stories, from four stories, to either two or three stories. We talked through the pros and cons of each option, and their consensus, though certainly not unanimous, was to move forward with three stories, which has been incorporated into our ordinance as well. And lastly, they had concerns regarding the architectural requirements of the townhomes. Their main goal, which is our main goal as well, is to ensure that the quality and character of West Point aligns harmoniously with the surrounding area. To this end, we have incorporated significant architectural and development standards into our zoning ordinance, and we are confident that these reflect in our shared priorities. We are also committed to continuing dialogue and working with these folks of Edgewater throughout the process, particularly once a builder is selected. Next, regarding boat docks, at the request of Mr. Boyce, we've committed to do no boat docks on the property. Regarding rental restrictions, at the request of Mr. Thurston, we've incorporated extensive rental restrictions to ease any concerns with the property becoming a rental community. And Todd, we just want to thank you again for all your efforts and working through those details with us. And then regarding environmental concerns, as noted in our last presentation, we are preserving 89% of the wetlands on site and impacting less than one-half acre. And we are committed to mitigating these impacts in accordance with all IDEM and Army Corps requirements. And lastly, we've committed to meeting or exceeding Noblesville parking requirements and will not be seeking any waiver on West Point.
What we wanted to show here is just on the building heights themselves. This shows in the yellow area, that is a commitment to two-story. And again, this was continuing to work with the council, the neighbors, on what are some of those height restrictions? In the yellow, you'll see it's a two-story height restriction. Last meeting, along the orange area, those were four stories. We've now committed to take the orange section down to a limitation of three stories. And then on the south side, we originally had five condos, or five stories planned, and in the purple area, that is now four stories. You can kind of see this is just a different rendition to show kind of the proximity slope. So this is from the north, looking to the south. The existing two-story house with the elevation is actually a little bit of a higher elevation than what the two-story townhome would be to the south. This is a west proximity slope. Edgewater Drive, over on the far left, the heights of those. And based upon the elevation changes, you can see a three-story townhome that will be on the east side of Levy Trail is about the same height as the two-story Edgewater Drive home. And we've committed, you see under B, additional trees along Edgewater Drive. Phil will talk about that in a little bit, but we've committed to, in the right-of-way, work with the city and the folks in Edgewater to plant additional trees there. Those are closer to those homes, which will actually provide a better buffer to the three-story townhomes.
And this slide, again, highlights our buffering commitments, which include the added berm and conifers along the north property line. This doesn't show it, but the added trees along Edgewater Drive, as well as the preservation and maintenance of existing tree line along the east side of the levee. Next, regarding our architectural commitments, these are excerpts directly from our ordinance. The key component here is the four-sided architecture requirement. You all would know better than me, but I'm not familiar with a project in Noblesville that has committed to four-sided residential architecture. This is a very bold statement of our commitment to the quality that we're pushing here at Morse Village. Additionally, certain enhancements are required to carry along all sides of these homes. We are also prohibiting lower-quality building materials, including vinyl siding. And lastly, exteriors are required to carry windows and architectural breaks along all facades, including the sides and the rears. These requirements are, of course, significant, and we are very confident we'll all be proud of the homes that are built here at Morse Village. I know this exhibit is a little tough to see due to the scale, but regarding the roadway improvements, we are committed, as you know, to build a roundabout at 206th and Hag Road. We will also widen 206th Street, Hag Road, and James Road to 12-foot travel lanes with a two-foot paved shoulder at the request of Mr. Hellman. We will be relocating the poles, which are currently two or three feet away from the edge of the travel lanes to the back of newly dedicated right-of-way for purposes of safety. And finally, we will be adding turn lanes at all new intersections to North Point, South Point, and West Point.
Just real quick on home valuation, I know that somebody will come up in a little bit and talk a little bit about that. We also have David Hall, who was here last time. I think you guys had a chance to ask David some questions. He's here to answer any questions you have on the report that he put together.
And with respect to floodplain concerns from the last meeting, we are located again east of the levee, and our property is outside of the floodplain. Thus, no floodplain impacts. And finally, as Mayor mentioned, with respect to water supply, CEG has provided our Will Serve letter for the development. Again, members of the city council, we want to thank you all for your extensive time, not only this evening, but certainly over the past few months. We truly appreciate your dedication. We truly appreciate your dedication and your willingness to communicate and have healthy, productive dialogue to us. It is very apparent that you all love your community dearly, and you certainly go the extra mile to ensuring what you're doing is what's best for your community. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Hold our questions. Go ahead.
Can you define four-sided architecture?
Let me see if I have a slide that shows them. So, essentially, if you're looking at the front of a house, there are certain architectural components to it. A lot of times, front of homes have masonry. They have decorative window trims. They'll have things above doors. And then, a lot of times, you get to the sides and the rears, those drop off. Our commitment is four-sided architecture carries those same high-quality materials all the way around the sides and the rears of the homes.
Those embellishments and materials would be consistent.
That is correct. Yep, exactly right. So, if you're looking at the rear of a home, it'll have similar materials, similar finishes, similar quality on the rear of a home as it does the front.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or clarifications before we move on?
Mr. President, one question, just if you could expand a little bit on the wetland and explain a little bit about mitigation and what that means, please?
Yep. So, on the development as a whole, there are, I don't know the exact, I think it was 4.4 acres roughly of wetlands across the entire site. We are, we've worked diligently through the design process to impact only .49 acres. And anytime in Indiana, when you impact a wetland, there are anything over, I think it's .3 acres or .1 acres, anytime you get above that threshold, there mitigation is required. Mitigation is dependent on the quality of those wetlands. So, once we get into the next step of design and start working through those permitting agencies, whether it's IDEM or the Army Corps, they'll determine what our mitigation ratio will be. It's, a lot of times, it's two, sometimes it's three, and sometimes it's even four, four times the amount of impact. So, if you're impacting a half acre at four times, you basically owe 2.0 acres of mitigation.
Which is replacing the wetlands in the same watershed.
That is exactly right.
And it's not optional, you have to do it.
That is a requirement, absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions before we move on to the?
Mr. President?
Yes?
On the story requirements, does, like on a two-story, is that two stories total or is that two stories plus a parking level?
Two stories total.
Including, which includes the parking level.
Got it. Okay.
Any other questions before we move on? Thank you. I'm sure we'll have you back up here in a minute. I'd like to hear now from Lacey Everett from MyBor. Just for the record, Lacey checked the box neutral on this project. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lacey Everett, and I'm representing MyBor Realty Association tonight. First, I want to acknowledge that there have been several important issues of a wide variety raised regarding the Morse Village development. For many years, MyBor has strongly advocated for balanced housing market, which addresses supply and demand and incorporates a diversity of housing types. Our organization's interest in this issue and our top priority is to ensure your discussions and deliberations are informed by factual data on the current housing market. As I proceed, please note that we are sharing data from 2018 and 2019 as a glance at pre-pandemic levels. So, we recognize that the last three to four years have been unconventional. Comparisons would be skewed more favorably on the demand for townhome and condo product. And it is important to us that we provide a fair and balanced representation of this data. Before referencing data included in our memo, we'd like to address inaccurate statements made about the housing supply in Noblesville. To claim Noblesville is not experiencing a housing shortage is false. Our data shows that new listings year-to-date are 26% lower compared to 2018 and 28% lower compared to 2019. On average, Noblesville has approximately 500 fewer listings compared to 2018 and 2019. A shortage of supply does exist in Noblesville, as it does in Hamilton County, our region, our state, and across the country. In recent discussions, there were also statements about the demand for townhome product and the impact attached product has on property value of nearby single-family homes. Our team pulled data from the Broker Listing Cooperative, which is our local multiple-listing service, and has provided analysis on this findings. When it comes to demand for townhomes specifically, findings from our analysis show over 400 townhomes sell each year in Hamilton County on average since 2018, accounting for over 40% of townhome sales in the Indianapolis metro region. Demand is also solid for townhomes with three or more levels, with almost 200 three-level or higher townhomes selling every year on average since 2018, making up 4 in 10 townhome sales in the county. Price growth for townhomes with three or more levels has continued to trend upward with an average increase of 6.8% per year since 2018, demonstrating the continual, continuing appeal of this product. Our findings also address the impact townhomes and condos have on property values of nearby single-family homes. Again, utilizing our Broker Listing Cooperative, we were able to analyze property value over time based on the proximity to townhomes. Our analysis found that single-family homes sell for more when they are near townhomes or condos. When you control factors like age, size, characteristics of the home, a single-family home sells for 9% more when it is within a quarter-mile of a townhome or condo. The same home sells for 11% more within 500 feet of a townhome or condo. Overall, the data that we have provided is compelling that townhomes have added to the growth and vitality of Hamilton County's housing market and certainly have not had a negative, have not have a negative impact on nearby property values in aggregate. We appreciate the opportunity to share this data for your consideration on this project, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Just briefly, can you tell me a little bit about MyBor?
Yeah, so MyBor Realty Association is the trade association for our local Realtors here in central Indiana, spanning the central Indiana region. So, not just this county, but 14 others.
Are you the largest?
We are the largest local board here in the state.
Thank you.
And what is your position or role with MyBor?
My position is with their Government Affairs Department.
Thank you, Lacey.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, we move on to the, we're going to reopen the public portion of the meeting. Just a quick reminder, you have three minutes to speak. Ms. Wiles will keep a timer. Please try to wrap it up as close to three minutes as you can. We will keep it professional and kind of keep it fresh. We've heard a lot of these comments, and I'm excited to hear new comments, but out of respect for time, let's keep them fresh. We'll start with Tim Hamishuk, and on deck is Detlef Rathmann.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
We'll have to, can somebody help with the?
Nope.
Just one second.
I'll go ahead and start.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Here we go. You're good.
Thank you. My name is Tim Hamishuk. I live at 7180 Oak Point Circle in Noblesville. Thank you. I'm asking for a vote no tonight, but ask you to consider a way to actually develop a win-win plan based on everything that's already happened. The Morse zoning requests relative to the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinances, the requests to be approved, requesting to be approved tonight, have significant variance, in some cases, totally eliminating those ordinances, which I feel is an extreme expectation given to what the original intent was for any of the developments. The demand to move from R1 to R5 far exceeds the plan Noblesville and the predecessor plans for these properties. The LOR Corporation never solicited input prior to the first presentation of this information from the public. And in fact, the LOR Corporation, the City of Noblesville, Planning Department, the council, the mayor, didn't in good faith solicit input from affected residents in advance of supporting this proposed development. Recognizing that the past development restrictions that were reflected with the UDO and with the plan Noblesville are now essentially reduced, or in some cases, eliminated if this was approved, the City of Noblesville should solicit requests for proposals for these properties, RFPs, and give all developers a chance to consider development of these properties with reduced restrictions and with the additional considerations that have already been put together. I believe the city should actively and aggressively seek proposals from multiple developers, not just local, but from across the US, who have experience with this scale of development, and use consistent requirements for all of them to start with, so that we don't have an iterative process that skews away from what other developers might not have had the ability to consider. Transparent communication of the RFPs, content, and ongoing communication with the developers should be provided. Public hearings and community input and recommendations should be required for all proposals. The entire process should allow for sufficient time to address all of the open concerns: the traffic, the roads, water, wildlife, architecture height, density, the tax considerations. And then, all proposals received should be publicly opened and communicated completely and transparently. Then, the city should vote to determine the best overall proposal for the community and the stakeholders, having considered consistent requirements and community input and feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Detlef Rathmann, and on deck is Gina Matty.
It's funny how your heart starts beating double time when your name is announced, isn't it?
We're also nervous, too, so please take your time.
Well, good evening, Mayor Jensen. Good evening, City Council, and thank you for serving and making Noblesville my hometown and so many hometowns for many people. My name is Detlef Rathmann. I live at East Harbor 2, as Water Drive has been mentioned here many times. And I want to tell you, the last time I stood here at this podium was almost exactly 14 years ago, in December of 2010. And at that time, I was looking in the face of Mark Boyce, and I'm still looking him in the face.
Sorry for your luck.
Yeah, you must start running, must start running when you were in high school or something. Also, one more aside, Mr. President. So, Mark Boyce is my favorite all-time city councilman. It used to be Greg O'Connor, but it shifted to Mark. Because one October, late October, I think it was 2010 or 2011, I decided to take my wave runner out for its final ride while I decided to die right in the middle of any shoreline. I left my cellphone on the shore because I already lost one to Morse Reservoir, and most of the boats were already put away for the winter. What do you do now? About that time, I hear an outboard motor and a pontoon coming around the point, and I stand up and I wave like crazy, you know? And he saw me right away and came towards me. He hooked me up and pulled me to shore, and that's Mark Boyce. So, therefore, yes, please. So, therefore, Mark Boyce continues to be my favorite councilman, Mark.
He's mine also.
Okay. I'd like to talk to you face by face, but I'm afraid I would get carried away and way over exceed my time, so I'm going to have to read. I'd like to read my comments rather than tell them to you face by face. And my comments are more in the macro sense of this project and not so much into great detail. And I just felt, you know, anyone who presents, first thing he has to, he or she has to decide, you know, you've got to talk about something people want to hear, not what you want to say. And hopefully, that's what we're going to do here today. So, as Mayor Chris did two weeks ago, I'd like to put a couple of stakes in the ground before I get to the meat of our discussion. So, my wife Sandy and I live in Edgewater Drive. We purchased our home back in 1997. And like so many others in Hamilton County, we wanted to be with our children and watch and help raise our children, our grandchildren. In fact, the first of our seven grandchildren, Kylie, was born on September 10, 1997, and we took occupancy of her home the day after Thanksgiving that very same year. Little did we know that Noblesville would become our hometown. We expect to be buried here as well when that day arrives and our great God calls us home. We did have the pleasure and blessing of participating in the growth of Noblesville is back in the 2008-2011 timeframe, when along with Steve Huntley and Greg O'Connor and Mary Sue Rowland, Chris Hammond, Steve Ingram, we developed the Noblesville Community Vision for Excellence Endeavor. That endeavor started out as a benchmarking committee, then moved to Noblesville Committee Vision for Excellence, and then wound up actually as Vision Noblesville. I have no idea if any of you remember that, but it was quite an effort. We wanted to move Noblesville from a very good city to one of excellence, encompassing five major strategies. We were even, I was even an employee of the city for a few months to begin implementing these five strategies. In short, as every one of you, we love our life and our lifestyle in the city of Noblesville. Now, relative to Morse Village development, I have three points to make. First one is too much, too fast. We realize there might be a lot of catching up to do, but are we trying to catch up too fast? Is it time for the Noblesville infrastructure to catch up and even get ahead of our growth initiatives? For example, should the four lanes of Hague Road from Highway 32 to Lakeview Drive be extended up to Carrigan Road before the Morse Village project begins? Should 206th Street be reconstructed into a boulevard commensurate with the Morse Village development? Is it time to catch our breath? Second point is existing population. To what extent should consideration be given to the existing population with developments of this magnitude? Many of us have been here 27 years or more. In this particular instance, most of us have expected growth, but not to this extent of building size, population increase, and all the potential problems that normally accompany an initiative of this size. We ask you to consider our desires as much as those who want to grow. Growing is fun. It's exciting. It's joyful. But please incorporate the thoughts, lifestyles, and comfort levels of those who have helped bring the city of Noblesville this far. In high-density housing, if high-density housing is a need in Noblesville, then are we considering other geographical areas within our city limits? As an aside, I happened to be watching Gary Dick's Indiana Business segment this past Sunday on Channel 4. One of the items was by Kokomo announcing a major high-density condominium project, and it appeared to be located in an area with little housing and about one mile from the very large battery manufacturing facility currently being built. Number three, temperature drop. There is too much we-and-they atmosphere in this project in developing, and we ask that together we find ways to review and analyze and mitigate our differences. A number of small group meetings have taken place, some with our mayor, among Realtors, among separate neighborhoods, with and without council members present, and more. These gatherings are all good and necessary. However, there seems to be little connectivity from one meeting body to the other. For the betterment of our great city, we should work together, and we need to understand each other's needs. It seems a project of this size and magnitude requires some sort of project manager, someone from the city staff or elected official or simply a private citizen, to get the right people together at the right time and communicate widely on all issues. For example, let's got our local Realtors together with the appraiser who presented at the last meeting and the Libor young lady today, and begin to understand, where did you get your numbers? What process did you use? Which database did you apply? To get agreement or understanding, our difference is better relative to future property valuation. To get agreement or understanding, our difference is better relative to future property evaluations. Another example, let's get the eagle proponents together with those who develop the guidelines for eagle protection to better appreciate each other's rationale. Let's get the city council members together to walk the levee and see the wetlands and eagles' nest. And let's take a look at helium-filled balloons at 5 feet, 50 foot high, et cetera, to get a better understanding of what is high and what will the current homeowners be looking at out of their windows and decks. Let's get Citizen Energy and Morse Marina and our police department together and understand the future need for more police boats and more police staff and less rental boats and less foot construction. It's one thing to steer a boat, it is quite another to captain a boat. Additional similar matters require our attention as well. Well, that's enough. I'm sure I'm way over my time. We would suggest another delay of your vote in order to get many of us better in line with one another and before any legal actions may develop. We appreciate the time and the privilege to provide this presentation. What a great example of freedom in America, where an ordinary citizen like me can share thoughts with city leadership like you. Thank you.
We let you go a little long because of your fascinating story about Mr. Boyce, but if we could try to keep it closer to three minutes, I would appreciate it. Gina Matty and Mike Olus is on deck.
Council members, I'm Gina Matty. I live at 102 Queensberry Court, and I'd like to speak on one of our most important natural resources. It's about water. Thank you for giving us more information about the water sources, because we were a little bit confused on the lower plans. It says American Water Company under utilities, but they mention Citizens. So, but Citizens has 15 different water sources. The source that we have up where we live is harbor water. It's from an underground aquifer. And our concern is, when I spoke with different departments, and especially recently, you've maybe looked at the Hamilton County, Indiana Water Availability Study, which shows an alarming increase in water usage, and they're encouraging us to conserve our practices, to ensure enough and adequate drinking water. When I talked to the engineers that were part of this study, they said, there's no way for them to know the capacity of an underground aquifer. So we really don't know how much drinking water we have that's available to us. So the wetlands are very important. Eighty-five percent of our wetlands in Indiana are gone, unfortunately. They filter and regenerate and replenish our water supply, our underground aquifers. They also protect the surrounding land from flooding by providing a holding tank for runoff. And the concern is, with this Morse development, that this will be adding pollutants that will be going, you know, into the wetlands and the ponds. They will add such things as oil from the parking lots. There needs to be sufficient buffering and grasslands around there to filter out the pollutants. Also, a wetland requires a geological survey and deep core samples, so they know if that area can actually withstand a four-story building, the weight of the building, and none of that has been determined yet. And when you cover this land, it will be more impermeable surfaces. You will have concrete and asphalt. There will be more problems with runoff, flooding, and pollution. So I want to speak a little bit about mitigating or replacing this portion of the wetland. This is a very difficult thing to do because of the different layers of soil, sand, and gravel that are in a wetland. It's something that God has created, and we can't really recreate. It's, when it's mitigated, it doesn't have to be over an aquifer. I have a degree in agriculture. Both my brothers farm. One of them had a neighbor who wanted to create a 40-acre wetland. But what happened is, he followed all the guidelines, but when it was flooded, the water just ran off into the surrounding fields, and the fields were flooded. So it does not work like the wetland should. So we're concerned about the development due to the quality, quantity, and quantity of our drinking water with this development. Is my time up?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I just want to mention, we have a beautiful mural, the atrium out there, which I think is Forest Park, and we just ask that you protect our natural lands. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Olus, and on deck is John Manley. We'll pause for Mr. Olus. We'll push him back a little bit. Joe Manley, on deck is Tim Portrait.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Joe Manley, 250 South Circle, Noblesville. There's a room full of people here. There's about 800 signatures supposedly. There's a lot of questions about this, which leads me to believe we need more conversation. You're under no obligation to vote tonight. You can table the motion. Let's have some meaningful conversation. Let's go to the high school and have a town hall meeting and have some meaningful conversations. There are too many questions. Secondly, I want to read the Indiana Code, statute 35-441 dot 1-4. In case you don't know, that is the conflict of business. That would mean if any of you had a financial interest in this, you would be violating the conflict of interest. I'm not stating anybody is in violation of this statute. There is zero evidence that anybody is in violation of this statute. However, there are some things that come up that don't smell right, and I think most people, that's kind of common sense. And I direct your attention to Councilman Darren Peterson, received a campaign contribution directly from lower corporation. To me personally, that doesn't pass the smell test. I think if he were to vote on that tonight, I think he's, in my opinion, disrespecting the other council members. I think he would be disrespecting this chamber. I think he would be challenging the integrity of the vote. So in my opinion, I'm asking Mr. Darren Peterson to recuse himself from this vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Olus. Mike, you want to speak? Mike Olus? You want to speak? We skipped you the last time. Tim, you're on deck, sorry.
Good evening, Council. My name is Mike Olus, Director of Urban and Suburban Forest for the Indiana Forest Alliance, and just wanted to make a couple of comments tonight. There was a comment made by one of the common counselors that the Indiana Forest Alliance is an outside organization, which seems like rhetoric that's been used against residents organizing all over the country, sort of a historical term, when people don't like what they're hearing. The Indiana Forest Alliance is a statewide organization, you know, with members in Noblesville. We were contacted by residents in Noblesville multiple times this year, worried about the pace of development, the loss of tree space, trees, tree canopy, a lack of response from engaging in the democratic process when it comes to zoning. And so, you know, personally, I spent a lot of time in Noblesville this year and would probably rather be anywhere else right now. But we decided to engage. Members of the Noblesville community raised money to send out a postcard, and that went to about 3,500 residents in Noblesville this past weekend. And I'll just say, the response, to me, was surprisingly overwhelming. I think there's been over, you know, between 270 to 300 contacts at least, based on the QR code that was on that email or on that postcard. I've never seen anything quite like that. We sent out tens of thousands of postcards on a broader wilderness bill issued to the state, and this garnered way more activity than I've ever seen on a postcard. So I just want to say that a lot of people are feeling not heard. A lot of people love the bald eagle, the bald eagle family. A lot of people love what Noblesville is and love the natural areas that are left here in suburban Indianapolis. And I just think that there's a, I'll just say this, that across the state right now, we are in contact with dozens of communities that are dealing with the same thing. How do we grow in a responsible manner? How do we grow with the city council or common council or mayor that doesn't seem to always listen to its residents? And so I just want to say that this is an issue across the state. It's not just a Noblesville issue. But, you know, hopefully tonight, this common council can take a deep look at this and realize that this land is precious. There's not too many bald eagle nests in Indiana, that this is a place of great beauty for Noblesville, and I think a lot of communities would love to have a bald eagle living there in their suburban community. And so, again, just want to say that, you know, the response of the postcard was overwhelming, and I've been to every meeting about Morse Point, except for the first one was economic conversation. There just seems to be so much people against this project, and those 3,500 people, those postcards went to everybody who voted in the 2023 primary election. And so, those are some of the most active voters in the community, and it just kind of shows you, to me, where the heartbeat is with Noblesville. So that's what I'll say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tim Portrait, Lynette Jones is on deck.
Good evening. Tim Portrait, 19479 Prairie Crossing Drive. I want to thank all of you for receiving my email the other day and for the diligent process you've taken, going to second meeting and having all the planning commission and all the public comment you've received from this. I know this is a hard decision and one that I appreciate the diligence you're taking. To add on to the email that I sent you, I'll try not to rehash too much, but there's a few questions I still have. I appreciate the presentation about Mibor, excuse me, from Mibor regarding the need for housing and the decreased availability of housing, and I understand it was in 2019 numbers, and I'm curious what the inflation numbers could relate to those things, because I know that home prices are considerably higher. I didn't know if that would be in relation to that. Because I do feel like we need to understand this housing need to first support any type of further development, especially considering we have a number of apartments that are not yet full and a number of developments that haven't started receiving residences yet, including Magnolia Ridge and Midland Point, which also has townhomes and flats attached to that one as well. Just briefly on the wetlands, I'm curious if the ability to even take the 11 or so percent away from the wetlands before mitigation, is that only be because of the House Enrollment Act 1383's reclassification? And what is the classification of our wetlands? Are they Class II? Are they Class III? I feel like we could use that information to help everybody understand even the ability to do this. Eagle permitting, I appreciate that they have the permit, but I have questions revolving the requirements to not construct during their breeding season within so many feet of the nest. And are we going to be able to do the proper improvements that we need for the roadways and whatnot that are specifically within those 330-foot restrictions? That leaves us about, what, four months in the fall to do all that construction? I understand there's a number of delays that typically happen with this, and I would hate to see us violate something and risk fines because we just couldn't manage because of unforeseen delays. Finally, I've heard a lot of conversation about the need for it, but I haven't heard a lot of conversation about the finances and how this will be funded. I saw the original article called this a $250 million project. Is this our first residential TIF here in Noblesville? And how are finances that are supposed to go from our property taxes into buckets for our police, our fire, our utilities, our schools, going to be redirected to this TIF if it is in fact a TIF? I understand they'll still receive funding from taxes from the state, but it feels like you're having, what, 600 new residences that aren't paying their taxes to the state. They're paying it to the bond measure at that point. Finally, traffic concerns. The road study, did it contain the Pleasant Street connection? Was that taken into account for that? So I'll wrap it up here. My question, my ask is tonight to either table or vote no. There are a lot of questions still out there. You've done a great job, but I feel like there's still too many questions to support this development. Specifically, why here? Why now? And is this a artificially rapid growth? Are we supporting the natural growth that we do need here in Noblesville? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lynette Jones, and then Justin Workley is on deck.
I was invited, Lynette Jones, 507 Westchester, Noblesville. I was invited to attend a meeting with Mayor Jensen and a few other people that he had there with realtors yesterday afternoon. And the realtors that were there were trying to explain to the mayor and the other people that they're seeing a real need for patio-style homes, one-story homes, in the higher-quality range, but one-story. And that's what they can sell, the townhomes. The families don't want them. The young people even don't want them, or they won't be able to afford them. Laura has mentioned a starting price point of $400,000. Well, you can't get much of anything for $400,000 nowadays. But the main thing that I came away from the meeting was, is when they were talking with the mayor about not building the higher-story homes, is that he said, quote, "Not financially feasible for lower." My question is, lower does not live in Noblesville. Lower does not vote in Noblesville. North Point, they purchased North Point, the one area, they purchased that on 6/28/2024. They do not pay taxes in Noblesville, except they will pay a very small builder rate of a $600 assessment next year. So I would ask that you would at least defer a little bit to what the people in the neighborhoods would like. Thank you.
Justin Workley, and then Amy Giganti.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Justin Workley. I live on Scarborough Circle in North Harbor. I also am the Director of Golf and Membership at Harbor Trees, also in North Harbor. As a lifelong resident of Noblesville, I've always been proud to live here and proud to be a Miller. When I got married 22 years ago, there was nowhere else I even considered starting my adult life. The reason we chose to live here is without question the culture and character of the city, but specifically the small community I was accustomed to and loved so much in and around North Harbor. For the last 15 years, I've worked at Harbor Trees, and throughout my career, I've had some opportunities to go elsewhere, but chose to stay, never really considered going anywhere else, again because of how special the area is. Since I've worked at Harbor Trees, there have been many changes. After opening the Beach Club and other significant investments, our membership has quadrupled, allowing us to accommodate hundreds more residents and guests. Harbor Trees is now such a popular destination club that we're estimating a three-plus-year waiting period to become a member. While we have a world-class golf course and unique atmosphere with a lakefront club, if you were to ask our members and guests what they enjoy about being here, they will tell you it's the people and the culture. Despite our growth, we've not lost the sense of culture and community that sets us apart from others. I share all that in an effort to help everyone who may not reside in or spend a lot of time here, understand what makes this area so special and why I think this is such a contentious issue for many. What makes us special is also what makes us different. Our surrounding cities are all starting to look the same, but when you enter our small community here around the lake, you know you're not in Carmel, Fishers, or Westfield. We are unique. We are special, and we're concerned that developments like this and others that will likely follow will destroy that culture and ultimately what makes Noblesville unique and special. As a lifelong resident, employee in the area, I don't think anyone has a deeper love or appreciation for both the city and the community as I do. All I ask is that you're considerate of these things and really reflect on what makes the area special and unique. Growth is inevitable and sometimes painful. We all understand that. But please be delicate with our culture and do everything you can to preserve our small community by steering away or steering the growth accordingly. We fought hard to maintain our culture at Harbor Trees and have enjoyed tremendous success because of making that our top priority. I hope the city will consider doing the same, and if you do, the long-term rewards will far outweigh the short-term benefits. Thank you. Thank you.
Andy Giganti. And Julie Hayes is on deck. Andy Giganti. Oh, there, Andy. Yeah, Andy, you're up. Julie Hayes is on deck.
Thanks again, every, everybody for coming. City Council, President of City Council, Mr. Mayor. Justin, couldn't have said it better. I, I really don't have much more to say.
Could you say, give your-
Could you give your name and address again?
Oh, yes. Andy Giganti, 333 Pickwick, 100 North Killarney is the Beach Club. I'm going to go a different route, a different place here. I've been part of some things in, in, in the medical field in which I've seen and been behind certain situations where we've had studies about things and new products and new advancements. Sometimes we, sometimes we get it wrong in medicine. It happens. But the first thing you think of when you're in it, and I'm not a doctor, by the way, I just own a medical company, but I deal with cardiovascular surgeons in hospitals all over the United States. The first thing is do no harm. So when you're looking at a situation, you don't want to go into that without knowing. I always say to the people at the office, you don't, you don't want to necessarily always work on the right side of the equation. That's the, that's the outcome side. You got to work on the left side of the equation, which are all of the details. And I think that's what you're hearing tonight. All these people want more details. They're not comfortable. If you get those details right, and it's not just meeting with them, it's the exchanges over time and the negotiations that produce an outcome. I think you guys got a chance to produce an outcome here today. And that outcome might be to delay this, possibly have more debate. I think we've got a lot of passionate people in here. So I'm going to ask you to reconsider passing this tonight. Maybe we need more time. And I personally, I don't want to see us in a situation where we have to recall something like a pro, a project because we can't recall it. It's not a medical device. It's not a, something that you sell and you can suddenly say, oh, wait, let's, let's go get those and fix that problem. This, you only get one shot to do this. So let's get this one right. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Julie Hayes. And Rob Larkin is on deck.
This is terrifying, and I'm so sorry for what's about to happen. I don't know. It could be heart attack.
Just breathe deeply.
I know. I just want to thank you all.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, I'm Julie Hayes, and I'm actually a neighbor. I live a mile north of 216th Street off Stringtown in Cicero at 1540 Bayswater Lane on Morse with my 56-year-old husband, my 19-year-old daughter, and my 85-year-old parents. So I've got three generations that I'm representing here. I travel Hague to 206th Street regularly to Fishers for my job and to shop and dine in Noblesville. I first heard about the Morse Village project in October when I saw the article in The Star announcing it. And I was a little shocked because I didn't feel like I had heard any conversation beforehand. So I visited the Morse Village website, and I was blown away. It is beautifully done. Perfect marketing, very impressive. I actually told my husband, we may need to move there after my parents passed away. So the mention of Eagle Lookout on the Morse Village website and the preservation area were what first caught my attention. And I was curious how exactly the eagles would be protected and preserved if the nest is a centerpiece of a new development. Then all of this progressed and I got more invested in what was actually going on. My understanding is the proposal has been in the works for two years, but this is all still relatively new to all of us, as I think the mayor first mentioned it in September. And then many of us were here at the Plan Commission meeting when that was passed and then brought to you now for the second time. Obviously, you've all made considerations and you've all put so much heart and soul into listening to all of us, and we appreciate that. I just have a couple of additional thoughts. What I haven't heard or been able to find is more information about any comparable residential projects that Laura has successfully developed, managed, or completed that are similar in size or scope, or would have the potential for such a profound impact as Morse Village. So if there's any evidence of that nature, it would be great to see, and I think it would help build our confidence. The concept of Morse Village seems to be heavily relying on existing amenities, specifically, as has been cited Harbor Trees Golf and Beach Club, which now it's up to a three-and-a-half year waitlist. I think last week it was two. The city's extensive trail network will fees Morse Peak parch, Morse Peak parch, park, you know what I mean. Rather than introducing a vast array of its own unique offerings, which is a basic hallmark of a master-planned community. We've been informed about the promise of 30 acres of green space, but that represents less than 20% of the total acreage, and I believe 20 to 30% is expected in master-planned communities. I could only find vague references to new retail dining options, a clubhouse, pickleball, and of course, the Eagle Park in South Point, but I think you could argue that's existing as well. More small-scale retail grocery dining in West Point, neighborhood style, small-scale, blah, blah, blah. The renderings, oh, shoot! Gosh, I'm so sorry. The renderings, I'm just going to finish quickly. The renderings of West and South Point seem to just show the residential aspects. I don't see how pedestrians and the residents are going to safely navigate between the three areas with the two major rows. I haven't heard anything about how we're addressing that. Oh, gosh, I had so much more. That goes fast. I'm really sorry. I think the, the last thing I would say is, this has been an eye-opening process, and I feel like there is ample opportunity for more compromise, more conversation, and it wouldn't limit the profit or the outcomes, you know, substantially. It seems like that can still be achieved. And to everybody's point, we are looking for a win-win solution. I'm so sorry.
Thank you very much.
Rob Larkin. And next up is Lee Putnam.
Good evening. I'm Rob Larkin. I live at 609 Coventry Way in Noblesville. I, first of all, I would like to echo the mayor's original comments about the threats to city officials and your people. That has nothing, has no place in this process at all. So that's just, it's ridiculous. My concern about this project is I don't think the traffic issues have been adequately addressed by the developer. Widening the lanes to 12-foot is not going to really do anything substantial to deal with the increased volume that this development will produce. That needs to be addressed. Two-lane roads on, both on 206th and on Hague is really a lot more, take, it will do a much better job of handling the volume that this development will increase. Most of the comments tonight have been about West Point. West Point is being looked at being developed on a piece of land that has been that way for, well, ever since Morse Reservoir was put together back in the 50s. It hasn't been developed since then for a reason because it just, there's no good way to develop it without causing problems to the environment. Possibly, the developer might have an easier way of getting this approved if the West Point portion of this was taken out. Just, just proceed forward with North and South Point. Those pieces of property were always and will always be going to be residentially developed at some point in the future. West Point should be left as it is, as natural land. And that's what I have to say tonight. Thank you for your time.
And next up is Roger Carlson.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Lee Putnam, and I live at 123 Heswater Drive in East Harbor, too. First off, I want to say thank you to all of you who have taken the time to take phone calls, to meet with us personally, to return emails and be available to understand our concerns about this particular project. We really do appreciate it a great deal. I also just want to say I've been in business for 43 years, working in corporate America, and last night running my own business. I can make data tell any story that I needed to tell to sell something to somebody. And I think that's exactly what's been happening here tonight. You're hearing a story that's intended to trick you into really, in keeping you from understanding the true facts of what this is really all about. You know, there's over 78 townhomes for lease in Hamilton County right now. Now, likely very few of those are in Noblesville, but those are in the Fishers and Carmel where you have a high density of those types of communities. They don't fit here. They don't fit here. I live on Heswater Drive, and you know, the thought of somebody building a 300,000 to 400,000 townhome across the street from 20 water properties of, all over, well over a million dollars, you'll have a hard time convincing me with any data that that's going to be good for my property values. I don't believe it. So I, I'm sure you're all familiar with the general provision laws of the Indiana Code, particularly IC 36-7-4-603. That provision says, "City ordinances, preparation, and consideration of proposals." Section 603 is preparing and considering proposals under the 600 series. The Plan Commission and the legislative body," that's all of you," shall remain reasonable regard to the comprehensive plan of the community, current conditions and the character of current structures, and uses in each district, the most desirable use for which the land in each district is adapted for the Indiana Code 2015, the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction, and responsible development and growth. I would be hard-pressed to find a single provision of the Laura proposal that meets any of those requirements for development. In, in Noblesville, we, we all truly appreciate your serving in city government. When I kind of just tried to understand this a little bit more deeply, and particularly speaking to not the council members at large, but those for representing specific districts, all of you received between 415 and 934 votes for your seats this evening. I don't think that constitutes a mandate, and it should say caution to moving forward on a project until you fully understand its impact on a community. The Morse community is not the same as the south side of Noblesville community. It's not the same as the east side of Noblesville community. I think Justin said it beautifully when he said that it is a unique place and should be protected as such. The last thing I would say is, in closing, you are the legislative body of the city of Noblesville government. You exist for exactly the reason we're here talking about this evening, to keep a mayor pressing an ambitious project that isn't good for the residents he thinks it's intended for. Thank you.
Roger Carlson. And Renee DeGuevera.
I'm Roger Carlson. I live at 102 Chaucer Circle in North Harbor, and I wanted to address the traffic. I agree with the guy who spoke two, two times ago. And these country roads can't handle that traffic, that this, they can't handle the existing residential population. Adding all this development to those two-lane roads is just going to make it that much worse. Imagine the traffic, amount of traffic that's on Connor Street driving down these roads. And Connor Street is four lanes where the comparisons with a previous speaker talked about, a couple of months ago, talked about how Connor Street, the amount of traffic on there is the same amount of traffic we'll have on Hague Road and 206th Street a few years from now. We just can't handle it. Thank you.
DeGuevera, did I say that right?
Yes. Hi, my name's Renee DeGuevera. I'm 208, I live at 20830 Winding Lake Drive. Thank you for those who responded, Mark, Daring. You provided plethora of information. Thank you. What I want to do, I want to read this. I, I did send an email to Denise, I believe the city planner for this project. On the question I had, I received, NICC'd, all city council have not received a response. So I'm going to read to you what I asked. The reason I'm contacting you is to see if you were privy of the development plans Laura Corporation initially provided, provided to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Department to obtain their permit. Since Laura Corp first presented to the common council, the plans have honed in on some areas of the development, and the public has become more aware of guidelines set forth in the general permits for bald eagle discernment. And after reading some guidelines, it doesn't seem Laura Corporation can stay within the guidelines. Here are a few guidelines I read up on. Alteration of shorelines and water bodies. Avoid draining or drawing, drawn down any existing water bodies within 660 feet of an eagle's nest at a rate faster than normal water uses or evaporation. Laura Corporation did provide a slide of the wetlands. I don't know of any other wetland than the one on, where West Point. So it said 89% preserved. Based on the guideline I just read from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, wouldn't that slides read 100%, 100% preserved? So I have a question about that. And then there is these guidelines. Alterations of vegetation. Minimize the amount of tree or significant vegetation removal within 660 feet of the nest. Being that I work at my computer all day, I did, I'm going to use this nifty thing if it's working. So I made Google Earth, I went on Google Earth. I did do the Google Earth of the nest, and I, they have these amazing tools on Google Earth, and I did 660 feet. So the wetland, as you can see, is within the 660 feet and vegetation as well. All that is planned, the West Point, as you can see on these slides and that slide, that houses are going to eat up all the vegetation. So that's why I posed that question to Denise, to see what the applica, what Laura Corporation put on the application. So we, the citizens, could see if he was forthright in what the guidelines say. Because I did not hear from anyone, I did some digging, and I also in contact with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and they told me about the Freedom Information Act. So I have asked for that application to see what he has put on his application and to see if he actually said anything about the wetlands that he's touching. So with that, even just with that information, there's more. I'm a mom, I'm worried about the rent-to-own percentage. Kids use that levy to go back and forth to school. Women use it. Women, I'm a woman mom. People can start, can, if it becomes a transient place based on the rental-to-own percentage, people can start looking and see your daily usage of the levy. And Erin, you touched base on the public safety for the seniors' living center, so this shouldn't be a huge thing for you, because you already showed your cards about the public safety for the senior living. So outside of that, there's many ambiguous things as well. I touched base on the rent-to-own percentage. I also, what are the covenants about the percentage of townhome condos for rentals? That hasn't, that hasn't been addressed to us. And that goes into the public safety of our children, of women that are going to be utilizing the trail and the levy. So I leave you with this. With all the unanswered questions, how can you make an educated decision to vote for the rezoning without all the pertinent information given?
Connor Sullivan. And then I have no more cards. If anybody, any stragglers want to bring a card up to the clerk's office. If anybody, any stragglers want to bring a card up to the clerk's office.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the common council. My name is Connor Sullivan, and I live at one-two-nine-six Connor Street. My wife and I are both Knossel graduates, two thousand and eleven, and we are truly proud of the work that you all have been performing over the last several years, and Mayor Jensen. We appreciate the quality of products, projects that you guys have brought to our city, whether it's Innovation Mile, the Pacers Arena, Federal Hill Commons, Pleasant Street, which we're very thankful for that one, that's right in front of our house, helps with Connor Street traffic. I know this is not a city project, but I have no doubt that if it does go through, it'll be held to the same high standards of all the other projects that you all have been working on over the last several years. So, I appreciate your guidance and leadership that you have provided to the city. And again, I am proud to call Knossel my home and hometown, and so is my wife. A few things I wanted to point out, I think there's a lot of valid concerns tonight. As you all know, there's many steps in these projects. This is just one of them. There are other checks and balances, so there will be plenty of other times, I'm sure, that these conversations, questions can be answered and whatnot. So, I appreciate the due diligence that you all have been performing. I personally work with quite a bit of your staff, probably more than they care to ever have to actually do, deal with, but I can assure you, they are some of the most competent, professional, and approachable staff of any of the cities in the county, and I know that they will be performing their due diligence as is required. And I am thankful that we have great public service in your staff. So, thank you for that. Thank you for your consideration for this project. I do, I am looking forward to it. Ironically, I am moving just slightly north closer to this project, and I appreciate the high standards that you're holding them to. So, thank you all.
No applause on that one. Carol Brooks and Deb Police is on deck.
Carol Brooks, two-oh-five Amherst Circle, Noblesville. That's in North Harbor. I'd like to talk about the twenty-twenty comprehensive plan and the land use plan, also the gateways and corridors. I don't feel like those have been touched on yet, and I was particularly interested to read that two-hundred-and-sixth Street is identified as a high-volume primary thoroughfare from Northern Wayne Township to Morse Reservoir. That, I believe, is actually on page two-hundred-and-two of the comprehensive plan. Also... I'm so sorry, I'm doing this on the fly a little bit, because I wasn't really planning on coming up here. Let me see. Two-hundred-and-sixth and State Road nineteen is a gateway, and there's quite a significant amount of commercial development planned on the planned future use map. I am very concerned that the Hague Road roundabout and the widening of Hague Road and two-hundred-and-sixth may not meet the needs. Perhaps it won't be ten years or twenty years, maybe twenty-five, thirty years' time, but I feel very much that we should try and get the roundabout and the roads right first time. And the location of North Point and the high density of North Point, and I'm not sure, I was out of the country for the last meeting, so I'm not sure what the final numbers are for North Point residences now, but it looks to me like they're a little higher than they were at the last meeting I attended. How does the traffic study, or that they completed, and also the thoroughfare plan traffic study, deal with these gateways and corridors that I'm mentioning, which will clearly provide a major east-west thoroughfare? It could stretch from State Road thirteen on the east all the way to U.S. thirty-one. We will be seriously impacted, and I'm concerned also, two-hundred-and-eleventh Street, North Harbor is only accessible from two-hundred-and-eleventh Street. You've already identified that a roundabout is needed at the North Harbor east entrance, opposite Oak Bay. Nothing on the other entrance. So, I would ask that you please consider that all of the traffic implications are taken into account. I'd also like to talk about the Exhibit J and the proposed removal of short-term rental covenants. All of the local HOAs in the surrounding areas have covenants to protect the properties and property owners from Airbnb and short-term rentals. Now, there's three-hundred-and-fifty-plus, or three-hundred to three-hundred flats, I think, are identified. I don't know how many of those potentially could be bought by investors simply to, after the one-year period, start renting them for short-term rentals. But I question whether or not that's providing high-quality housing, which Law Development are saying that they very much are keen on introducing through this Morse Village development. That's, that's all I've got to say on those points. I hope you will consider them. I do feel like, as been said before, there are still so many questions that we would really appreciate you giving us more time to talk things through and reach a compromise. Clearly, this, at the moment, is not where the residents would like to be, and I don't think, I don't think it's doing the service, it's service to the residents who might, may be interested in moving to Morse Village. Are they, are they going to get what they, they were expecting if Airbnb rentals become such a problem? Finally, I did write to you all early this month, and I thank you, Councilmember Smith, for replying to me. I really appreciated your response. So, thank you very much, and thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you. Deb Police and Bill Thompson is on deck. Yes, sorry.
Okay. No, that's okay.
The applause is for you.
Okay. Deb Police, one-oh-five Cherokee Lane, was not going to speak tonight, so just bear with me real quick. One thing, I know many of us really question this, the validity of the, of the traffic study, okay? So, I need to ask the question, when was the traffic study conducted, Lore? You did it. When was it? July? July? Okay, school is out in July. Do you understand? That makes a big difference. Was school in session or out?
We'll just, yeah.
Okay, we'll see this. Okay, but if it was in July, you understand, like, traffic's cut in half on that road, on Hague Road. So, keep in mind, we have a bus transportation center on this road, we have a school, we have a fire department, and we have a lot of neighborhoods coming in and out of that, okay? So, is this really the right development for this area? We need to think about this, because once you build it, we're done, okay? So, I just, I really need you guys to take a pause and think about this traffic. And just because you're going to put a roundabout at Hague and two-hundred-and-sixth, that will do nothing for the congestion, it will do nothing for the congestion. So, I just, please, please, please consider what this is going to do. Is this right for us right now? Is it? I don't, I really don't think it is. And if this traffic study was done in the summer, when school is out, then it has no validity, really, because you, I'm sure, I don't know if you guys have traveled on that street, on Hague Road, when school is in session, out of session, and you've got fire trucks and everything. It's going to be a disaster. So, good luck.
Thank you. Bill Thompson. Scott Steeman here on deck.
Hi, Bill Thompson, seven-six-five-five, Winding Lake Drive, south. I live in Carrigan at the Levy. My, my house faces, my backyard faces the West Point project. So, about twelve years ago, we were living in Fishers, and decided, you know, we were tired of the congestion and the density and all that kind of stuff, and looked for an option, and we came up and found this lot vacant and for sale, and our concern was, oh, this big property in back, and what was going to happen to that property, and what, you know, I didn't want Walmart showing up there or something like that. And so, we checked, and the zoning was single-family, and I'm like, okay, I can deal with that. And, you know, so now, I feel like if this passes, this is voting, like we were tricked or lied to. So, that's our frustration, and I would hope that you, you know, vote no. The one other thing I'd like to say is, when this started, I thought we were here to honor Mark, and I like to say, Mark's an Eagle Scout, as am I, and proud that you sit on the council.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Scott Steeman.
Scott Steeman, eight-two-eight-oh, East two-hundred-eleventh Street, Noblesville, about a half-mile north of this development. I wasn't going to speak tonight. Matter of fact, as some of you know, I sent Chris and all you guys an email earlier today. My daughter had a choir program tonight, but I got out early, so I decided to come over. And I want to thank Chris for you coming, talking to everybody, all you members, Adam, Bill, all the police officers, everybody here, help this democratic process work. I want to start with something new. You know, there's a lot of questions that are unanswered, a lot of good points, traffic, school, you know, the TIF thing, I'm not concerned, I mean, I'm very concerned about that if that's working. I know Darren has offered to get with me and discuss that a little further, and I want to thank Mark and Darren and Mike for returning my email. Thank you for the respect of that. And, you know, I was born and raised here, so I've been here sixty-two years. I own businesses here. I started Mufflers &amp; Moore nineteen-eighty-eight, sold it ninety-five. I own Southwest Style downtown Noblesville for twelve years. I owned a building at six-oh-one Connor where the Last Shepherd Insurance was, sold it back in two thousand and three. Still working. Started late, fifty-one, forty-eight I got married, fifty-one I had a child. So, I'm going to keep working from now on. My new thing is something that's kind of dear to my heart. All these, all these points are very important, and I think we need more time to look at this, all of us together, and work together on this. I'm opposed to it. At first, I wasn't. I thought, well, we're going to have, it's going to be built up eventually, and that's what my wife said. She goes, you're fighting something that, you know, you can't fight. The more I look into, the more I think, that's not, that doesn't have to happen. You know, I'm concerned about losing the farmland, for one thing. A hundred-and-seventy-five acres, you know, that's, you know, once that's gone, it's gone. And Hamilton County has lost eighteen thousand acres since two thousand and one to two thousand and twenty-one in, for development. And it's at a rapid pace from then on. And look at the east side, you know, over the Hamilton Town Center. I know I talked to Jim Hager about that property he's got, I'm not going to go into details, because, you know, it's, it's, too much of it's being developed. And I own a little farm up in Atlanta, and I call myself a half-assed farmer, because all I would do up there is build hot rods and choppers, and I let somebody else do the farming. But it's, it's near and dear to me to think about this. You know, I think we're getting too much development, too fast, in too many areas that we don't need it. And, that's it. Time's up. Thank you, everybody.
How was, how was the recital? Was it, was it good?
Yeah, music concert.
Choir recital good?
Yep. Sarah Lassiter.
What's that? Was the choir recital good?
Oh, it's awful.
I got priority, you know. I said priority, too.
As you should.
Hello, Sarah Lassiter, six-hundred Longford Way in North Harbor. I am a graduated Miller, a mother of two Noblesville Stew students, the North Harbor HOA president. I take that position very seriously. I have been listening to my residents with really no pleasure for West Point. I've been to both Planning Development Committee meetings and the last council meeting that you had on the third, and I take super detailed notes. I've emailed you all almost this exact thing. I've received responses from some and not from others. I appreciate that. I know that your time is important. An HOA president probably has this much work compared to you, but it's a lot, and more than I ever encompassed, so I can't even imagine your workload. So, I really do appreciate all of you. North Point is going to be super densely populated as it is, and I know that part has already been purchased. So, for me, I worked for a residential and commercial developer before, I was a stay-at-home mom for years. We did lots of neighborhoods in Hamilton County, both some that got sold to custom builders, some that got sold to production builders. You know, I've seen the gamut of all different kinds of developments. We are getting the dense population from North Point. There's no argument there. The restaurants are needed, Rio's wait time is too long. It's, that is not the issue. The homes that South Point will bring will be beautiful, and this area deserves some attention. No, I don't think anyone is arguing that. It's just West Point. There's, this section just, is a lot, and to me, I feel like a compromise has, is in your hands. There's really a true opportunity to make these people feel like they've heard. Whether the ranch possibility is true or not, I really feel like Noblesville has not had a true custom community in over a decade. I think Slater Farms might have been the last true, original custom development, even though it didn't turn into that, but that was even close to fifteen years ago. So, a true custom neighborhood that could provide high-end ranches would be a winner. I'm talking about, like, million-dollar ranches would be a kick, a kick-ass project, right? I mean, I think that really would ease the pain of the people who are on Westchester for their property values. I don't, I think another large property that costs almost the same amount as theirs would be more of a help than a hurt. I think you can increase your groundwater retention, because you won't be installing large parking lots and large giant structures, which maybe that can help relieve the wetlands. You're going to listen to all the concerned business owners who are here and who are maybe directly directed, impacted, excuse me, by the water usage. You maybe can decrease some traffic at two-hundred-and-sixth and Hague Road without that high-density product. I think you show respect for the eagle habitat, you listen to the realtors who have come up here and spoken their piece, but the most important thing that I feel like I've learned in this process is that you listen to those who are being directly affected. They ask for your consideration, they vote for you. Please let them feel like they've been heard. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, Sarah and to a lot of people, went to school with you, Sarah. I haven't forgot about you, still have the wreath you made me, proudly displayed every spring. There's quite a few of you that I didn't get to respond, and I was desperately, even before this meeting, at least trying to scroll through the multiple of emails and back and forth. So, for those of you that didn't receive an email from me, it was at the very least read and taken for consideration. So, Sarah, at a personal level, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that I read it, and I apologize if I haven't been able to respond to everybody. As you can tell, I'm kind of, been under the weather lately, and I'm on the final stage of it, but anyway, just wanted to put that on the record, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, I have no more cards, so, speak now. We're going to close the public hearing. We've broken this up again into, you know, some things we've heard. We heard them a couple weeks ago, we heard them at Plan Commission, and want to make sure they get addressed again tonight. I'd actually like to start, Sarah Reed, are you still here? Yeah, thank you. Talk a little bit about the process. This is one of the first steps. We're going to continue, and also a little bit about the comp plan, if you don't mind.
Will do. Thank you very much. Sarah Reed, Community Development Director, for the record. Just wanted to touch base for council for the audience on the next steps for Morse Village, and also what happens after a council vote for all other mixed-use developments and even subdivisions. So, this project will come in through the Planning Department and be reviewed by Planning and Engineering on a phased, phased approach, section by section. Typically, a developer will start on one end with infrastructure and housing lots and move to the other end of a, of a development. They start with the Technical Advisory Committee that includes various city, county, school... They start with the Technical Advisory Committee that includes various city, county, schools, and utility providers. That produces a standard and compliance letter, and upon sign-off and completion of all of those items in that letter that's reviewed with the construction set of documents, a pre-construction meeting will then be signed off on and scheduled. For that TAC, Technical Advisory Committee review, it also includes IDEM permitting items that engineering usually includes in theirs, which is sewer, MS4, and wetland review for permitting. After TAC, there will be two permits issued with that pre-construction meeting, and those include both an improvement location permit, and that's for utilities, infrastructure, and site work. And then after that, the second permits will be a series of individual building permits for either residential or commercial, building permits for review, sorry about that. Those include architectural review, and the multifamily condominium and commercial uses also require a state CDR within that process. And then, Mr. Peterson, you also asked me to cover the Comprehensive Master Plan. Again, that document, our current Comprehensive Master Plan was adopted in 2019, and those are updated on a five-year basis. As you all know, from the council perspective, we just approved a budget that includes a full Comprehensive Master Plan update for next year. But with that respect, these are future land uses and future land use maps. It's meant to be a vision, a guiding document that guides this development. It is not a zoning map. It does include, I heard a reference earlier, also the Thoroughfare Master Plan, and that has been updated recently as well, so that will get included into this new update that's coming in 2025. With respect to that, again, I just, I think in the last meeting I reiterated the difference between land use and zoning, and the reason we are here today is for a change of zoning, not for a change of proposed land use, of which the one site that we're talking about, West Point, has three land use bubbles, again, their, their concept bubble, so that they're made to be flexible. There were three separate land uses provided just on the West Point development, highlighted in the staff report.
How often do we update the Comprehensive Master?
Every five years.
And what is the, what are the three pieces currently zoned?
The...
Industrial, South, South Point?
South, sorry, I'm going to do my map, I don't have my map here with me. No, no, okay, I'm okay. Yes, go ahead. Without the map in front of me, the southeast corner is I-1, I do know that.
She is correct. The northeast corner, 27 acres is zoned PB currently. There is, the northeast corner of that piece is zoned R-1, and then West Point is zoned R-1.
Okay. And the uses in I-1 or industrial?
Yes.
Correct. Light industrial, enclosed industrial.
And we, we touched on it briefly, and it gets too far, it gets way down in the weeds, but why R-5?
R-5 is the only land use category, or zoning category, excuse me, that allows for town homes.
Attached.
Attached product, correct.
Okay. But the density allowed, and we saw this last week, the density in an R-5 is up to 10 per acre?
It's higher than that, yeah, almost 15.
15. And we're at 6?
Six.
Can I have 6, 6?
Thank you.
So we're far below the...
Yes, it's, it's really that attached product that kicks it into the R-5 category.
The R-5 is a little glitch in our UUO.
Correct.
Mr. President, I would just, I would also note that it's the density, but it's also the zero lot lines that we allow in, for townhomes, because they share walls, so that's part of the reason that it works in an R-5 zone. Still treated as a, under the Comprehensive Plan, still treated as a single-family product, it's just in an R-5 zoning district. The other thing I wanted to note, and Sarah mentioned this, that's the process she just outlined is the process for every development, if it gets approved. So if it's approved, then there'll be additional process, that's what Sarah's talking about.
So in some cases, the waivers granted for zero lot lines is because of the common walls between the townhomes?
So the, some of those waivers may be related to that, the, the, and Denise can, can speak to that, but I think that's the reason for the zero lot line waivers. There's also related, there's a waiver on North Point with respect to buffering, and that is because, or the setbacks, and that is because the residential is, or the, I'm sorry, the commercial component is intended to be neighborhood commercial, and so we want pedestrian access, and so we don't want it setback so far that it looks like it's not a neighborhood-type feel.
And on the residential pieces, the perimeter setbacks have not decreased, those have not gone to zero. In some cases, those have increased.
Correct.
It's really, comes down to zero lot lines are because of the townhome product.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other zoning, oh, schedule, sorry. Walk me through a little bit the wetlands, I know that's a state agency. We've got a lot of comments about why isn't this wetlands plan approved? And my feeling is, you know, you got to get the zoning, and then you go through the wetlands, you do the investigation of the wetlands, you do the deep drilling. Well, can, if you can, can you kind of talk me through why we're getting these questions?
Sure, yes. So after, you had this exactly correct, people, developers for master plan communities come through and get the zoning approved first, they are, they do a, a level of due diligence where they look at, you know, water tables and, and wetlands hu- higher level, but from there, they then create, once they get the zoning, they create these construction-level documents that are reviewed by all of these various agencies. So before they move forward to get those permits from IDEM or from the City of Noblesville, they have this high-level preliminary engineering, and it gets deeper, much deeper from there.
And there's no compromise to that?
Correct.
This isn't something, okay.
So same for, I'm sorry, but so a comment was made about like a geo study, all that will take place now, if the zoning goes through.
Yes, so I heard a comment earlier as well about, right, about the, what's the ability of a foundation, you know, to hold up a four-story structure? All of that is, a structural engineer will be signing off on plans on their behalf for those developments, and then those will be reviewed by our engineering team, the County Surveyors Office, city planning, as well as various other utilities.
I saw, Phil, did you?
Yeah. Okay. Yep, I know Phil was taking notes, too, he's an engineer.
Just to address the city planning, and this is, if, if a zoning is approved, you have to submit your plans for the development, and part of that will include making sure that it's, that your plans are signed off by a geotech engineer, and then that's, that site is evaluated by the city. So that's the city side of it, but Lore can speak to their development process.
Thank you, I want to get through the process, but thank you.
Appreciate it.
Lore, if you'd like to come and respond, and we can either, if you want to speak or we can, I just want to make sure you hit a few points, but go ahead and respond.
I'll add real quick, on the geotech, so we've done preliminary studies on the front end, on the geotech side, we've gone out, we've done borings, we...
She just needs a microphone.
She needs her microphone.
Mine died.
We've done preliminary studies on the front end with geotech and with wetlands. Originally, as I think we mentioned, there were five-story condos on the south side. We actually had preliminary design done to ensure that five-story condos would work on, on the site, and that's been confirmed. As Sarah mentioned, there will be additional study down the road. That, that study will include detailed engineering, somebody stamping plans once the, once those buildings are, are designed.
Okay.
Just wanted to add that.
We heard a lot about roads tonight.
Mr. President, real quick, just to follow up on that, if, if we get to that point and it doesn't, doesn't hold ground, then what happens at that point?
There are improvements that you could do to foundations, you could drive deeper pile, there's a lot of things you could do in bad soils. Yep, yeah, you would know better than I would. Rampires, there are improvements that you could do in bad soils to foundations to, to, to hold the structure up.
We have a geologist on the council, so I feel like... Okay. We heard a lot about roads tonight, traffic study. Walk me through the methodology of, how do you do a traffic study? How does it account for seasonal fluctuation?
When were the counts done?
When were the counts done?
Yeah. Mr. President, if you don't mind, we'll ask the person who actually conducted the traffic study to answer the question.
Okay, yes, please. Introduce yourself and your address and...
Sure. My name's Amanda Johnson with EMCS. We perform the traffic study for the project. Our address is 9955 Crosspoint Boulevard in Fishers. So to start with the data that was collected, we were provided the existing traffic counts from the City of Noblesville, and those were actually used in the Impact Fee Zone Improvement Plan that was conducted in 2024, the most recent update. So that data was actually taken from a company called Streetlight Data, which basically looks at time, average weekdays, which we consider to be a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, with schools in session, there are no holidays, no Christmas breaks, anything like that. Looking from, these were taken from April through October, and then normalized based on other historic actual data that was collected. So I won't go too deep into the weeds there, but that's a standard for what the City of Noblesville has been using for traffic on traffic studies. I spoke last time, and so I'll briefly go over how we produce traffic studies. So from, from those existing counts, then we added traffic from any background growth in the area that would be going through these roadways, not due to the development, just to get a baseline. Then we analyzed with the added traffic from the development and to see what those incremental improvements would need to be. I know there was a lot of discussion about the roadways themselves and widening those. I did want to touch on, in a suburban area, yes, segment capacity is very important. However, what governs the capacity of the roadway is typically the intersections themselves. For instance, if you are stopped at, at a red stoplight, or in this case at a, a stop sign that the opposing flow does not stop at all, you will wait a lot longer, and it will decrease the operations along that segment. So that is why we generally compare operations at the intersections themselves. Additionally, in this case, turn lanes also drastically improve the capacity of a roadway, and widening does improve capacity as well. I did want to note as well, I think, obviously, we don't know necessarily what's going to happen in 30, 40, 50 years. We project out 10 years in this case, and I know for road, road projects, we project out 20 years, so we did test that case as well. With that said, I know the developer is devoting that right-of-way so that it can be expanded if needed in the future.
So I guess to answer the original question, the, the data was normal, the, the traffic report was turned in in July, but it was normalized over a year to account for seasonal fluctuations?
Yes, absolutely.
And the, you, you touched on it briefly, there's dedicated right-of-way if we need to add lanes. Okay. And the other part that fascinates me from being on the Roads Committee, that it, it is interesting that it's not necessarily the roads, the road width, it's the intersections that are always the problem. And so I appreciate 206 and Hague being accelerated because of this project.
Absolutely.
Were there other, how many, how, how big of a scope, how many intersections do you look at? You look at James Road, how big was this, was this study?
Yes, so we looked at 206th Street and Hague, James, Carrigan and Hague, 196 and Hague, 196 and James.
Okay.
As well as all the development, actual driveways.
Okay.
I have one more question. I believe it was Rob Arkin, maybe that brought it up? He's the 12-foot and then standard and then the two-foot.
Shoulder.
Yeah, shoulder. How, who decides that? What standard does that come from?
Great question. So in this case, the City of Noblesville, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, yes, thank you, specifies the ideal roadway widths for each, each type of roadway. Capacity-wise, a 12-foot roadway width is desired, and that is set by Federal Highway and Highway Capacity Manual standards.
Great, awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Do we know what that roadway is now?
I believe it's nine feet, yeah, with, with very little shoulder, if any.
Any other questions regarding roads or the traffic study? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
We had some questions about water, I think those were answered with the CEG. Do you have any questions about the water letter from CEG?
Nope.
Okay.
Just to confirm, you said they're a part of TAC, right? So they would be a part of the review, should this be approved?
That's correct.
Okay.
What, what, what's the staging of this project? What, what kind of, the order of construction?
Yeah, you want to talk through some of the engineering?
Yeah, I turned laser pointer on real quick. Can you guys see that there? So our first phase is to start, basically on the southeast corner of South Point, we will extend sanitary sewer up. The interceptor sits right here on the school's property. It extends up through South Point, over Westerly, and essentially dead ends here at North Point. The first portions of the development will be in South Point. It will develop the single-family first. Shortly thereafter, we would move into phases of North Point. Again, this is, this is a long development, probably seven to 10 years, I would estimate. So it's going to take some time. And then, yeah, beyond that, it would extend into West, West Point as well.
Okay, so West Point is the last piece?
Yeah, I think so, I mean...
Maybe some infrastructure.
Yeah, yep.
Where does the, what, what's the schedule on the road infrastructure aligning with, with that process?
You kind of hit the nail on the head last time, Mr. Boyce. I don't know if you want to rehash kind of what you walked through in terms of how developer... Just, I, I just mentioned last time with the roundabouts, that we do not do roundabouts usually until the land is given to us by developers, just because we would not be able to afford to do those. So that's kind of the reason why there has never been a roundabout there so far. So we are waiting for someone to develop that. Should Lore go through and they do that, then they will provide us with the right-of-way for the land, and then we will, that'll be one of the first parts of the project, usually, as long as we can get the funding for it, set aside and ready to go. So I'm looking at our head of engineering and our mayor as I say this, and seeing if either one of them say anything differently, but usually it's one of the first things to, to start. Yep, thank you.
We had some questions again about the Eagle. Just wanted to make sure your permit, when you submitted to Fish and Wildlife, was accurate? I mean, is, are those plans available somewhere or...
Yeah, anything that we've provided, we're happy to share, and we've been in continued communication with Fish and Wildlife, even after we have obtained the permit, with questions or concerns or anything like that.
Yeah, everything that you see on the screen here is what was presented.
You disclose the wetlands were...
Okay, okay.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. President, I, I'm assuming then that the Fish and Wildlife experts will have the ability to inspect during construction to see that you are indeed complying with that permit. Is that a routine and regular thing that, that is done? I would assume it would be, I don't, I don't know.
So anybody would have the right to come and look and see if we're complying with some of the recommendations by US and Fish and Wildlife. I don't know if US Fish and Wildlife actually enforces and comes out and does weekly checks or anything like that, but, but we have recommendations that we've committed to follow, and we've worked extensively with them.
So when the, when the neighbors feel you're out of compliance, they're going to call the city, and the city's going to send somebody out to make sure it's going well? If it's not going well, we'll stop work, contact Fish and Wildlife until it's back in compliance?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Is that a reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but the land is currently zoned industrial, so an industrial project could come in tomorrow and go forward and, and build something, and while they would still have to follow the Fish and Wildlife permitting process because of the Eagle being there, I don't know that an industrial proj- project's going to have as much care and concern potentially as a residential project. So it's just, it's one of those things that, it's already, I mean, something could happen tomorrow, or a project could move forward there, so.
That's right.
Yeah, fair point.
Also, the reason I was asked about the timing, if, if a partner were to come along and, and decide that West Point, they could make West Point go as single-family homes, you would, you would entertain that person, talk to that person, we would have to, if you can, the Eagle can be made, they could come back through this process and amend West Point. That is still an open possibility.
Yeah, we're in discussions with builders now, but yeah, I mean, theoretically that is.
Okay.
Yeah, one more.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I apologize. Several mentioned, several moderators mentioned questioning Lore's experience or ability to manage a project of this scope. Can you address that?
Sure. So, so my grandfather started Lore Corporation in 1965. We've been a family-owned and operated company since that time, and we've done probably 50 commercial projects throughout the greater Indianapolis market, and we really don't expand, we expanded one time outside of Indiana, but we stay in the central Indiana area because it's the market that, that we've been in since 1965. With, with Phil on board, I, I think there was a comment, have we done anything of this size? Well, Phil was the, the head developer for Chatham Hills with Hanky Development. Phil was also the head developer for Holiday Farms. That's an 1,100-acre project and a 600-acre project respectively. Between the two of us, we've probably developed over one and a half billion dollars of, of commercial real estate development. So we feel, one, we wouldn't invest the money that we've already invested in the project, which we have, we, we own one of the parcels. We wouldn't invest the time, and we wouldn't be in front of you if, if we didn't feel extremely capable and confident to, to push the project forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I understand that any development in Chatham Hills, totally different development than I would call it.
Yep, yep, I worked for Hanky Development for a number of years. I was Steve Hanky's lead engineer, lead developer. I've worked alongside him through Chatham Hills, again, eleven-hundred-acre development as well as Holiday Farms, a six-hundred-acre development.
All residential?
Yeah, yeah, Holiday Farms has a small portion of commercial along 421, but you're talking, that development alone probably pushed close to a billion dollars.
Okay. We had some questions about, any more questions about that?
No, thank you, thank you.
Schools, we had a couple of questions about schools. We've been in constant contact with school administration about their ability to absorb this project and students into the school system, as well as financial implications. We've had three counselor, or three school board members as the RDC or Plan Commission who voted in favor of this project, so I feel comfortable with our partners at schools.
Can we talk a little bit more about the rental restrictions that came up again? The concern that this is going to become...
Yeah. First off, Phil's said this numerous times, but the character and quality of the requirements and the architectural standards, this is going to be a much higher-quality development just in general. The price points will probably, I would venture to say, will weed out any potential investor issues, but in addition to that, in addition to that, we've made a commitment, so for the first twelve months, these can't be, they can't be rentals for the first twelve months. After that twelve-month period of ownership, only twenty percent of the overall homes in West Point and South Point could potentially be rented. And of those twenty percent, it is a minimum rental period of twelve months. So that's, so there's kind of three commitments there, I don't know if that answers your question, but you can't rent for one-year period. After that year period, only twenty percent of the homes could potentially be rented, and of those twenty percent, you have to have a lease for a minimum of one year.
So it's not an Airbnb or...
Not a short-term lease.
No, there's absolutely no short terms and all that.
Mr. Hughes, could you shed a little light on what we as a municipality can do?
Yeah, so there, as a municipality, and this board knows this, not too long ago, before some of us are on this board, HUD has some fair housing requirements that exist, Housing and REIT Development, which is a federal government agency. And so under the federal fair housing laws, we as a municipality can only do certain things with respect to rentals, with respect to multifamily areas, very, very limited oversight that we can have on regulating those. For example, the previous HUD investigation said that we could not limit the number of bedrooms in certain developments. We couldn't say that developments could have three, or could only have so many three-bedroom units. They wouldn't allow us to do that. And so there's very, there's very specific rules of what we can follow at the federal level. At the state level, there is a general requirement that we cannot absolutely prohibit Airbnbs. We're not allowed to do it, there's state legislation on that. I suspect that issue's going to continue to come back to the state legislature, so stay tuned for potential developments in that area, but there was legislation five years ago or more that prohibit us from doing certain things in the Airbnb space. As a result of that, the way that we've handled that in our community is have requested developers of developments like this to make commitments to put into their HOA covenants, which is what LoR has done. LoR has gone, on their commitments, they've added the additional twenty percent restriction cap that we haven't done on other developments, might be something to consider on other developments. But these are, that type of rental is consistent with what we've asked for on other developments.
So just to be, just to be clear on that, since any of us have been here over the last five years, this is the most restrictive that we've been able to get so far?
Correct.
Okay.
And at the end, at some point, this is turned over to the HOA, and there will be enough people in the HOA living there to take it over and announce self-policing, and they can come back, they can modify that HOA agreement as a private group.
Sure. You know, as an HOA community, any HOA can get together and modify. I can say, I heard one of our speakers tonight talk about having these restrictions in HOAs, and we hear from a lot of HOAs wanting these types of restrictions, and we encourage them to work together. We as a city can't force it on you, but we think it's a good idea for your HOA, but it can be difficult. I think Mr. Thurston was in an HOA where they did it, but it's not easy, because you have to get two-thirds of the development sometimes or whatever together to add those restrictions. So having it on the front end, I think, is a good thing, and if they wanted to make it more restrictive in the future, they certainly, the HOA could certainly do that.
Thank you.
I have one more comment about that, too. So just, I'm kind of big on that as well. This was something I pushed them for pretty hard on. As John mentioned, you know, my neighborhood just did it. Darren and myself have met with a couple of other neighborhoods to kind of just show them some of the wording that we've done in other HOAs. I think it's really important, you know, when you build a neighborhood, I think you build a neighborhood to know your neighbors. And so we're, it was very important to me that we get something in this. And again, I asked for ten, I got twenty, with the caveat that once it turns over to the HOA, the placeholder is already there, and then at that time, the neighborhood themselves can change that to ten percent. You could change it to one percent, but it's nothing that we can really do, but it's something I wanted in there from a developer standpoint, so as they're looking at builders, that they're aware of some of the restrictions that we're setting forth, so that we don't have a lot of short-term lease rentals.
Any more questions? We want to talk a little bit about the townhome product and pricing and price points and values. We saw a great presentation from MyBor. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, I think, once we finalize our user, obviously, they're going to come back through, there's a certain process they'll come back through with detailed elevations. We'll have an ARB, obviously, internal with the developer, that will work on meeting or exceeding our requirements. I don't know if there's any specific questions on the townhomes, we're happy to answer anything that you guys have.
Just as a confirmation, though, the commitments that you made today with the four-side architecture...
Correct.
That, no matter which builder you choose...
That's exactly right.
They are...
Those are the standard requirements that they have to meet or exceed, that's exactly right, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. President, I don't know what that was, sorry. Just a quick comment here, I really appreciate MyBor coming out tonight and sharing their data. One thing to note is that year over year, sales of three-story townhomes in Hamilton County have dropped by seventeen point eight percent, marking the lowest level of sales in seven years. So I do think that is something that we have to monitor as we move forward. We have also already this year so far committed six hundred townhomes to the rest of Noblesville. So I think that's just an area where we have to be very cognizant of, you know, I'm, everybody needs a home, right? I'm all for different product types in different places, but I do think that, you know, with the three-story townhome products specifically, that is, that is something to look at. The townhomes, the close sales of all townhomes peaked at five twenty-one in 2021 in Hamilton County, and this past year, they fell to just three fifty-two, which is a thirty-two point four percent decrease. So the data that MyBor provided is fantastic, but it also shows some areas where I think we just need to take a little bit of caution, and especially with what we already have committed into the ground. So wanted to share that.
Sure. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Mr. President, can I speak to a couple of the legal issues that came up? First, thirty-six, seven, four, six, oh, three is the general statute that was brought up about zoning. I just wanted to note that under Indiana law, the courts have been very clear, zoning is a legislative process, that means it goes through this exact process that has happened, and then you, as the elected officials, vote with consideration to those items that are listed. I would also note that the staff report goes over each of the items in the statute and expresses why staff was favorable on each of those elements. So you could vote in favor of this and have evidence in the record on each element. Additionally, we've had additional evidence since then, including the MyBor study, a report from LoR on the, or from Integra Realty on the values, and other evidence that you've heard over the last couple of meetings. So there's been additional evidence since then. Also, I just wanted to address comments that were made about citing a criminal statute. Title thirty-five was cited. I want to be very clear, that's a criminal statute for conflict of interest. It was stated very clearly by the individual who made that comment that there was no evidence, I know of no evidence, to support any of those claims. And I wanted to note that Indiana Code three-nine-two and three-nine at SEEC talks about political contributions and the disclosure process for those, and those are treated completely different than what the criminal code talks about with pecuniary interest. So I just want to be really clear, I think words are important, I think words matter, so I want to be very clear that when we say, come forward and say someone's violating a criminal statute, we should have evidence of that. The other thing I would note is that in the Indiana Administrative Code, it's very clear, forty IAC two-one-six, very clearly says that political subdivisions are not included in that context, so I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. President, my last comment relates to the appraisal report provided, contracted and provided by LoR. Mr. Hall specifically, I was just curious, I read all ninety-six pages, I'm a Realtor, so there you go. Can you speak to why Geist area homes were not included in that ninety-six-page report?
Do you have to give us your name again and address?
Yes, good evening. David Hall, I'm the managing director with Integra. Our address is forty-nine eighty-one North Franklin Road in Indianapolis. So I guess with respect to the data, two things. One, we had to find actual transactions that occurred, and ideally, we're trying to find what I call paired sales. So ideally, that's a set of data where we have sales that occurred adjacent to townhomes, condos, apartment complexes. And then within that exact same subdivision, we're also looking for transactions that are not adjacent. So the communities that we identified in our report were those that met that standard, where we had both, simply weren't able to find that data or sufficient number of transactions around Geist.
Thank you.
Sure.
More questions?
Mr. President, one other thing I wrote down, there was a lot of talk about just golf courses and some of the strain around there, and I'm a big fan of Arboretrees, it's one of my favorite golf courses. I also play at Foxbury. Within this development, there are eleven golf courses within twenty minutes, three of them being private, so there's plenty of golf to go around, I promise you.
Last comment, Mr. President.
Yes.
When we look at a city, one of my roles as a city councilman is to be a voice, that's my first role. My second is to have a bit of vision, right? You hire me to have some vision when we're looking at different projects, and I see different districts within our city. You have a downtown district, you have a Hamilton Town Center District, you have Innovation Mile, you have Federal Hill, and this is a very specific district, one that has a very specific feel to it. And we need to be very cautious about how we preserve that feeling, because that feeling, in my opinion, relates to the value of the property. And we have some great amenities in Noblesville that I am thrilled to have. We have, we have two Myers now, how about that, right? But I, we really need to decide, and I don't know if we're going to decide tonight or later, whatever that may be, if we want this area to have amenities that every other area has, or if we want it to have its own unique structure.
I'm just, I'm just curious, Mr. Elliott, when you voted in favor of this project for the development agreement, and again, for speaking out in favor of this project, what has changed about this project, other than the softening of it that's made you change your mind?
Details. This project has changed multiple times as we've gone through, and I'll admit, as of October fifteenth, I thought this project was super cool. It had different elements, we were going to get some new restaurants, right? Perhaps a new quick-service grocery store or something like that out there that I think would add tremendously to the amenities. And in speaking with my other councilman up here, I think we can agree that there's a lot of agreement on North and South Point specifically. West Point is where we still have some concerns. I would not necessarily be opposed to tabling this vote. I don't know if my other councilman would be open to a vote like that, just to specifically hone in on West Point, but I really appreciate everyone coming out and sharing their ideas. I want you to know that you have been heard. We have, we have done our very best, especially to respond to your emails, and when the QR code went out, really sorry, it started bulk-loading our emails, so we didn't get a chance maybe to apply to as many of you as we wanted. But yes, I will, I will admit, Mr. President, as of October fifteenth, I was a huge fan, and then I really got down into the details of this project and realized the scope. A hundred and seventy-three acres, two hundred and fifty million dollars. We cannot hand the keys, the Porsche keys over until we know that the driver and the engine and everything is working together. So that's how I feel.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, I just make a comment, that I would say since October fifteenth, this project has only gotten better. So it's surprising to me that you now are more concerned about it than you were in October. So with that, I'm going to make a motion that we amend, we need to amend the ordinance to add in the exhibit.
Yeah, correct, so your, the amendment that was presented, the ordinance was presented to you as amended and included the commitments that were discussed tonight.
Short-term rentals.
Which includes the short-term rental provisions, as well as other commitments that Mr. Sunling went over on his one slide.
So I would move that we amend ordinance seventy-three dash eleven dash twelve as presented.
Sorry, it's actually, it's seventy-three eleven twenty-four that needs amended.
Oh, twenty-four, yeah.
Sorry, twenty-four. Seventy-three, I would move that we amend ordinance number seventy-three dash eleven dash twenty-four as presented.
Second. Motion to amend ordinance seventy-three eleven twenty-four as presented, a second, this is a hand vote, also favor, raise your right hand. One, two, nine, oh.
Mr. President, I would then move that we approve ordinance number...
I'd like more discussion, please.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. President, so first off, I want to thank Adam and Phil. You guys may be upset with me for saying this, but you guys have been some of the best developers that I have worked with since I've been here. I know Mr. Thurston said that they set the bar high for developers. They really have. As many of you heard, I've walked the trail with them back in June. It had vote docs, I was strongly upset with those, we were able to get those out, and they have worked with us. So I do want to thank them. On the same side, I want to thank all of the public that's here and that's not. We've received over three hundred and fifty emails on this, and I have responded to almost all of them, but I know most people have wanted to, and we haven't had time to, too. So if you haven't, then they still may. I've also gotten around fifty to a hundred texts and gotten many door knockers, so I appreciate all the feedback that we've gotten, it's been great. And there's a couple of different things that I would say that I appreciate about it. One is that... It had vote docs, I was strongly upset with those, we were able to get those out and they have worked with us. So I do want to thank them. On the same side, I want to thank all of the public that's here and that's not. We've received over 350 emails on this and I have responded to almost all of them, but I know most people have wanted to and we haven't had time to, too. So if you haven't, then they still may. I've also gotten around 50 to 100 texts and gotten many door knockers. So I appreciate all the feedback that we've gotten, it's been great. And there's a couple of different things that I would say that I appreciate about it. One is that, other than the couple outliers that we talked, the mayor talked about tonight, everything was very passionate and persuasive, but very respectful. And so I appreciate that for the process and I think that those two, two or three will be addressed, but for, other than those, then I thank you for coming to us and telling us your feelings and being respectful about it. Another thing that I noticed, that I haven't noticed in the past, when I've gotten a lot of feedback from this, was that almost every address was from Noblesville that I received. They were from all over Noblesville. I saw, I got stuff from Wellington, from Hamilton Southeastern, from downtown, but 350 emails from, all from Noblesville. I compare that to, the two big ones that I've had in the past were Positron and Beaver Gravel Pits, where we received a lot of information. The majority of those were not from Noblesville. We were getting stuff that were, and anytime you'd look up where they lived, they weren't from Noblesville. So I appreciate that this one is our Noblesville citizens. With that then, I will say, 350 emails, over around 100 texts, two were for it and every other one was against it. So I'd have to be pretty confident up here to, in my point, to believe that I was smarter than all of the other people that I got. So however, I will say, there was one other time I voted, about 15 years ago, where 99% of the people believed one thing and I voted the other way. So I would not say that I never would, but you've got to be pretty confident and pretty good with what you're going with that. But with that then, I go back to, last week, we had Ray, who lived on Edgewater, he was a planning director in a neighboring community and he mentioned that changes should be, I'm quoting him, "Changes should be gentle in mass, height, and density when you're planning any districts." And I go back to that and I've done a lot of driving around Noblesville this last week and I believe that we've done a really good job historically doing that. As a city then, I don't think that we have lots of mass changes. But on this one then, we've got four-story right in the middle of residential and I've gone all over looking Noblesville to see if I can find any four-story in the middle of residential and I can't. We do have four-story downtown, but it's not next to residential. I look at Sagamore being similar to this and the highest is three-story and there's, those three-story condos are separated by golf holes. So there's a big, huge golf hole change there to help buffer that. So I go back to, in June, then I talked to Lore and told them that I was sorry, I could support the majority of this, but I couldn't support, at that time, we were calling it Javco, now it's called West Point. And I do appreciate the changes that have made, but I still can't support it, even though we've made some of those changes. And it's not because you guys are clapping, it's not because of that, it's really what I believe down, whether I have those, that many people are against. I can, I can get behind some of the South Point and North Point, which may upset a lot of you, but the West Point, I seriously can't. So with that then, I, and done.
Thank you.
Well, and last, last comment, I appreciate, actually, Councilor Thurston's proposed amendment for the 20%. I think it's really important that we preserve some of that residential housing, but I also want to use that as an example for the fact that every time that something has come before us, we have had a change. So there was a change tonight and then we had to vote on it, right? So I'm not, I understand that this, these things move quickly, okay? This is a fast-moving machine, but to Ms. Wiles' point, it's not always a perfect machine, but we get there in the end, right? And so I, again, just thank you for being here tonight.
I also did want to comment to Mr. Boyce's point, you know, we have gotten, I've gotten a lot of texts and emails also and phone calls, of people that are in favor of the project for a variety of reasons, but are a little bit intimidated of coming to a meeting like this to speak in favor of it.
I've gotten three.
Yeah, I've gotten 20, I've gotten several. I just wanted to point out, it is intimidating to come here, we saw at the Plan Commission, a gentleman was heckled off of the podium and so I just want to point out that, you know, we don't get a lot of people to show up to these meetings who are in favor of projects.
And this is a community of 75,000 people, so hearing from 350, we appreciate hearing it, that's for sure, but our role is to be looking out for the whole of the city of Noblesville. So with that, I am going to move to amend, to approve ordinance number 72-11-24 and ordinance 73-11-24 as amended.
Second. Motion, approve ordinance 72-11-24 and ordinance 73-11-24 as amended. And a second, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Nay.
Mr. Davis?
Nay.
Mr. Elliott?
Nay.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Six aye, three nay, the ordinances are approved.
Thank you. Council comments? We are adjourned.